Good evening, I'm calling the Monday, March 22nd, 2021 Planning Commission Meeting to Order. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you, everyone. Just a reminder, or a note for the people online, could you please mute if you're not speaking? So we don't pick up feedback in the room? All right, moving on, first item on the agenda is the approval of tonight's agenda. Do I have any requests for changes to the agenda this evening? Entertain a motion to approve the agenda?
I'm of approval of the agenda.
All right. Commissioner Higgins has moved the agenda, do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Mehdi, second. All those in favor of approving tonight's agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the agenda is approved. Moving on, we have the minutes from the meeting held on Monday, March 8th, 2021. Do I have any concerns from the commission or requests for changes? All right, entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Only a motion to approve the minutes?
All right, a motion from Commissioner Gooding, do I have a second to approve the minutes?
I will second those minutes.
All right, second from Commissioner De Sanctus, all those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, minutes are approved. Moving on tonight, we have one public hearing this evening. This is Noble Hill Road 20-21-02, request for planned unit development concept review on 27.51 acres, planned unit development district review with waivers on 27.51 acres, zoning change from rural to R1-9.5 on 27.51 acres, preliminary plat of three parcels into 50 lots and four outlots on 27.51 acres. I know there's a lot of people listening in here, so just to give you a little bit of insight in the process, what we'll do is have the proponent of the project come forward, tell us about the project, we may ask some initial questions from them, we'll then turn it over to, for a staff report from the city, may ask some questions there as well, and then after that initial kind of run through of those two reports, we'll then open it up to a public hearing, so everyone can have a chance to come up to the microphone if they like, and we'll talk a little bit about those ground rules at that time, so. All right, with the proponent, project, would you come forward? Good evening, if you would, would you state your name and address for the record, please?
Certainly, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, city staff, I'm Dean Lauter, I'm the manager of land planning and entitlement with Polte Homes. With me also is the Director of Land Planning and Entitlement, Paul Hoyer, and a representative from Alliant Engineering, Mark Rausch. If we could have the slideshow up, there we go. Appreciate the opportunity to come before you and talk about this project, I think there's a lot of good information for us to share. We've got a short presentation, relatively speaking, we'll introduce you hopefully to our company, for those of you who may not be familiar. Talk a little about the city vision and the Polte plan for this site, and how those two visions, I think, marry up quite nicely with the proposal that's before you. We'll take a look at the homes that we're gonna propose building here, our schedule, and then of course we'll finish up with a summary, and then we'll stand for questions. Little delay, there we go. So Polte Homes, if you're not familiar with our brand, we're a large reputable national builder. We also operate under the Dell Web brand, which is an iconic brand for our 55 and up active community, although you may not have seen many of those in the Twin Cities market, we are introducing that particular development brand into the market. We currently have a site in Corcoran and another one in Chaska that are currently under construction, a lot more popular or more prevalent in southern states like Florida, Texas, and Arizona. But we're proud to bring that name brand to the cities, but also just as representative of Polte, you know, what we strive to do is understand our customers in the market, and we're known for our superior floor plans because we design our homes based on the feedback we get from our customers, and a lot of our customers, what we try to do is develop a relationship with them, so that if they are entering the market for the first time, perhaps as a young couple or an individual person, they would perhaps choose to buy a townhouse or an entry-level single-family home. We hope as their family needs change, that they would consider coming back to us again, perhaps for a larger single-family home, and then ultimately perhaps for one of our 55 and up products. And so in order to do that, you have to maintain a strong relationship with those customers, and that's what we try to do, and we do that through creating great floor plans. The City Comprehensive Plan is called Aspire 2040, and what I'd like to do is just kind of take us back to a point in time where this site... Sorry? I don't know if you can move your cursor, Julie, over the standal property site there, it's the yellow, the orange, and the lavender, are you able to see that on the screen if she does that?
I can see it on my screen, but it doesn't show up.
Doesn't show. All right, well, the point is, at one point in time, the City's Comprehensive Plan actually had this site slated for three different uses, low-density, moderate-density, and even office space.
Why?
And then the current...
Excuse me, sorry, if you're, if you're online, could you please mute or pick it up some feedback, please?
I have my own...
And then the current City Comprehensive Plan actually has all three parcels guided for lower-density residential, and the historical use, of course, has been for a residence there, there's a pool, a barn, some other outlot-type uses, all associated with that of a tree farm, so for years and years, this was a tree farm.
You know, you are doing to the environment by developing that area?
If you're online, could you please mute?
I'm not online, I'm on a phone call.
Okay.
And you were expecting thousands of people to get water in that site.
And I'll be happy to actually address that issue.
Just give us one second, we'll mute them for you. Okay, feel free to continue, thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I do that once my slide shows back up?
Of course.
Okay, so just picking up where we left off, the historical use on the site has been that of a tree farm, and the proposed zoning, as was mentioned previously, is for this property to be rezoned as R195 PUD. There we go. So I just wanna like maybe take a second to take a good look at the property as we talk about it, I think sometimes there's a little confusion about exactly what's being discussed, and I wanted to show that the area we're talking about is the standal property, but there's three separate parcels there, as denoted by 1, 2, and 3, those are the sites we're talking about. And we're not, actually, the city owns the land to the south, and it actually owns the land to the west where the spring is, that's not actually on the standal property at all. So just kind of honing in a little bit more closely, we're now just looking at parcels 2 and 3, you can kind of see that big arrow that goes across, that's actually going over the current use, the current residence that's there, and the Christmas tree farm business that's there, you can see kind of the rose and the grass where the trees were grown and harvested. And what I'm pointing to right there, I think there's several people here who have concerns about, and we'll talk about it, it's the Frederick Miller Spring, the pipe outlet is on the east side of the road, but the spring itself, and that pipe outlet, I want to also state for the record, is actually on city property, that's not on anything that's under-proposed for development with this particular proposal. The spring itself is found to the west, and the watershed is to the west and the north of Spring Road, so it's not actually affected by the development proposal at all. Of course, another sensitive area that we have is the Riley Creek, which just kind of comes into parcel 3 and then dips right back out, but there's the associated wetlands with that, and we want to make sure we're taking good care of that. You know, it's kind of hard to see from this particular photo, but there's a sand grave, gravel prairie area, that's roughly where the arrow is pointing to, and we want to make sure that we protect that, and of course you can visually see a lot of the naturally-standing vegetation that's on this particular site. So what's the Polte plan, and how does it, how does it work? So as you'll notice, this plan itself is, got all the proposed homes to the eastern side of the property. What we're showing is basically thirty, over 31% of the, of the developable area is being preserved as open space, and it, and it protects all of those sensitive areas that I just mentioned. And the reason why we're able to do that, or the idea behind our proposal for a PUD, is that it allows us to have the lot sizes, to get the neighborhood to lay out the way we do, to have the grades that we need so that all the infrastructure works, and to protect those sensitive areas that we're all concerned about. So I realize that this proposal does look familiar, you saw something similar about a year ago, and that's when Gagne had proposed a very similar development, we still would have access off Spring Road, and, and ultimately the road would cul-de-sac before it enters into the existing neighborhood of Hennepin Village, we're not proposing that that connection take place at all, we're proposing that that cul-de-sac right there. And while there are some obvious similarities when you look at the proposal, there are some very significant differences. Gagne's proposal was 59 homes, ours is 50, so we're having nine less homes, and that's also allowing us through the PUD to preserve more than 14% trees in terms of caliber inches than the previous proposal. We're reducing the retaining walls needed by 35%, and we're even reducing impervious surface by another 5%. So we're taking what we believed was a strong proposal originally a year ago, and making it much stronger. We're also gonna be planting a lot of trees, our proposal, along with saving more trees up front, is that we'll plant more trees than the proposal from a year ago, about 250 trees instead of 217. And what we do is, this is just Polte's process for planting trees on a development site, but we always phase the development, or we always phase the planting of the trees, and this is something that the city staff communicated to us also, that's the desire of Eden Prairie. So you can see there are a lot of trees on the perimeter of the neighborhood, those would be phased-one trees, because those wouldn't be disturbed as the lots are being built on. All the backyard and front yard trees would be phased in secondly, once the homes are built, so that there's no chance that the root systems would be damaged on those recently planted trees, and hopefully ensure a greater level of survival, greater rate of survival. No trees will be removed from Hennepin Village property, we can't do that, and I also want to make sure that's stated for the record. So what do the homes look like, or what would they look like? These are the, are some pictures of what we envision for the homes at Noble Hill. Generally, just a little over 3100 square feet, a little shy of 3600 square feet, doesn't include the basements in that square footage, but talking four bedrooms, three-car garages, very nice homes. So our schedule, our hopeful schedule, is that we would achieve your support, or receive your support, to move on to talk with the city council about this application, we feel it's a strong proposal, if so, we would be hopefully in front of the council in May, and final plat approval would hopefully be achieved in June, we would of course then start our site development work in the summer, and hopefully be selling homes by the end of the year, we would expect to build out in 2024. So for some reason on my slides, my titles didn't come through, and I'm not sure why that happened, but, so with the PUD, these are the waivers that we'd be looking for in the zoning standards, the minimum lot size, minimum width, front yard setback, length of the cul-de-sacs, these are the exact waivers that were asked for and received by the previous applicant a year ago, and it's, it's, it's basically so we can protect all that sensitive land in the southwest portion of the site that I previously had discussed. So to conclude, we, we feel that this proposal marries the vision that the city has with guiding the zoning for the site. Frederick Miller Spring is not impacted negatively in any way by virtue of this development, and we protect sensitive areas by giving up to 31%, more than 31% actually, of the site will be in outlots, and will help protect those sensitive areas. And just for the record, frequently what we see with PUDs is 10 to 15% of that land in open space, and this proposal offers over 31%. Mr. Chair, I stand for questions.
Any initial questions from the commission?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Commissioner Farr. Sorry. Can we ask about the neighborhood meeting? Did you have a neighborhood meeting, and if so, could you share the findings or concerns of the neighbors?
Yeah, Chair Farr, we did hold a neighborhood meeting, we did that back in February. I want to say that there were about 15 or 16 people who attended, it was a virtual neighborhood meeting, we ran through a similar presentation at the time with the neighborhood, and we received questions that were predominantly about saving trees. There is a stand of pine trees in Block 2 that would be removed as a, as a result of the development, and there's one neighbor in particular there who would love to see those pine trees stay, so we talked a little bit about that, we talked a little bit about Junegrass Lane, we were proposing a different name, we need to come up with a different name, other than that, we were calling it Lark Spar, Larkspur, not Larkspur, excuse me, Lark Sparrow Lane, and that's the street that would cul-de-sac just short of Junegrass Lane and Hennepin Village, so we talked a little bit about what the proposal was gonna look like there. And those, those were the primary topics, I think that there were some other questions about what the view sheds would look like, you know, basically some folks were saying, am I just gonna look at a bunch of roofs? And, and the answer is, you know, they'll, in some instances, of course, they'll see some roofs in the area, along the, a good portion of our development, as it's adjacent to Hennepin Village, we'll be putting in 10-foot coniferous trees, a whole row of them, and that will be on top of a four-foot, four-to-seven foot, depends on where exactly you're talking about retaining wall. So a lot of the views from the existing homes will actually be relatively well-screened from the backyards and the roof lines, so those were kind of the, the things that were talked about at the time, the Frederick Miller Spring didn't come up at all in that particular neighborhood meeting.
Thank you for the summary. Commissioner Mehdi?
I know you touched on it in your presentation, but I'm just going to ask it again, just so everyone's clear, because I, I'm getting the sense that maybe there's some misinformation or misunderstanding with regards to the spring, so is Frederick Miller Spring, is anything going to change at all with the spring, the way it operates, whether now, during construction, or in the future, is anything gonna change, is that spring gonna continue to stay exactly the same?
Yes, it will, nothing will impact it negatively at all, the source of the spring is from the west side of the road, the pipe was brought under the road to the east side of the road, so there will be no negative impacts from this proposal on Frederick Miller Spring, it'll continue to operate just as it has.
So Miller Spring actually exists on the west side of Spring Road?
That's correct.
And there's simply a pipe that runs it underneath the street where people collect?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, sure.
I have a question. Um, can we...
You'll be allowed, you can, we'll open the public hearing in a minute. Yeah. We'll open the public hearing in a few minutes, you'll be, you can come and speak, okay? All right. Commissioner De Sanctus, go ahead.
One question I have is, has there been a study of the wildlife and habitat ecosystem habitat and impact on pollinators, flowering plants, and actually wrap their nets or nesting site? I didn't see anything in your literature that suggested that has been addressed, there's a very unique combination of ocher, pine trees, and deciduous trees on that property.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, and I recognize that that is likely the case, all in what would be proposed to be Outlet D, which would be preserved, there is one thing that we will need to do in the very near future, and that is have the site walked, the site has been walked, Alliant Engineering is who worked with the previous applicant on their development proposal, they're very familiar with the site, but we will need to have a survey done this spring, in the coming weeks, that will look at all sensitive vegetation, particularly the kitten-tail vegetation, that we want to be able to demonstrate as not being negatively impacted, it may not exist actually where we're looking to build our homes, but that's something that we will be completing, it is one of the conditions of approval, that's in the staff report.
Questions from the commissioners? Commissioner Higgins?
Yes, I wonder if you could give us some indication of what the reasons are, and I, I'm sure there are several of the various retaining walls that you're proposing for the development, I know there are several that are fairly, you know, substantial, and then there are smaller ones, and the major thought I have about that is, of course, that as I understand your literature, the homeowners in the development, when it's up and running, presumably would have responsibility for maintaining that, those structures, so could you give us a, the explanation of what the purpose has been behind the design of how to space those and the types of structures that they are?
Sure. Mr. Chair, to Commissioner Higgins' question, the site itself, if, I would imagine you're probably all familiar with it, it's, it's got 150 feet of topographic relief east to west, so there are tremendous grade changes on that particular site, you know, and so in order to build the subdivision in such a way, so that, you know, the stormwater will drain appropriately and go into the infiltration basins, which actually help clean and cleanse that water before it moves on, so that the utilities can actually work, and that the streets aren't at too sharp of grades, you know, and aren't too difficult of hills to go up and down, you end up having to grade out the site, so that you have to use retaining walls in order to make sure that you've got different grades and elevations that will be maintained over time, and that's what helps make the site developable, and that's what's necessary, we, we took a good long look at it, and we reduced those, the number of those retaining walls by 35%, so we tried to cut back as much as we could, but it's necessary because of the grade and the topography of the site.
All right, not seeing any other questions, thank you, Julie, will you take the staff report? Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, members of the commission.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, as Mr. Lauter stated, the project area is roughly 28 acres in size, the applicant is requesting approval of a rezoning to R195, a plating of the property into 50 lots and four outlots, as well as right-of-way, and is also seeking PUD approval for the project. A project that is very similar to this one was previously reviewed by the Planning Commission in August of 2020, and the Planning Commission did recommend approval of that project, however, the application was withdrawn prior to city council review of that proposal. This project is very similar in nature to the design access points configuration that was shown in the previous plan, however, this plan includes 50 lots versus 59, which was what was shown in the original development. The Comprehensive Plan does guide this property for low-density residential, so the request to rezone to R195 is consistent with the City's 2040 Comprehensive Plan. As a part of the subdivision that is proposed, as I mentioned, there are four outlots, several of those outlots are small in nature in that they either provide room for stormwater treatment areas, or provide connections to a trail, the most significant outlot that's proposed with regard to size is Outlet D, and that is about eight and a quarter acres in size along the western property line, so as you saw from the graphics that were shown by the applicant, the majority of the development will occur on the eastern portion of the standal property, and roughly eight acres on the west side will remain in its current state in order to preserve the creek, the bluffs, and the shoreline features that exist in that area. There are several waivers that Mr. Lauter reviewed that are being requested, lot size, lot width, front yard setback, and an over-length cul-de-sac request. The development as it's proposed does not show a connection to Hennepin Village, however, the developer will continue to have conversations with Hennepin Village about whether or not there would be the opportunity for a connection in the future, or whether there would be a, excuse me, opportunity for, say, a trail connection between the two developments at this point, so it's my understanding that the homeowners association is set to meet with the developer on April 1st to continue to discuss what will happen as a part of any potential connection. The plans, as they are submitted, do not preclude the future connection between the Noble Hill project and the Hennepin Village project, and if this development moves forward, the development agreement would contain any conditions or triggering events, if you will, as to how to address any future connection, should that be an item that moves forward in those conversations. As a part of their submittal and information that was provided to the cities, there was an endangered species review that was conducted, that review does show that there is the potential for a couple of endangered species, so as a part of that, a field assessment will be done on the site in the spring, once the conditions allow. Again, should this development move forward, the development agreement would include language that would address if there are endangered species found as a part of that field assessment, how they would be addressed, and what the timing would be for any specialized attention or detail that needs to be paid to preserve those, those specific issues and items. As a part of the proposal that is before you, Polte Homes does include sustainable features as a part of their homes, I know that's something that we routinely share with the commission as part of our presentation and our review, so the Polte Homes are rated using the Home Energy Rating System, the HERS score, and in that, in that case, the lower the HERS score, the higher the efficiency, so for instance, a home built in accordance with the 2004 International Energy Conservation Code would have a score of 100. On average, Polte Homes have a score of between 47 and 53, so as you can see, they include a fair amount of energy... of between 47 and 53. So as you can see, they include a fair amount of energy conserving items. As a part of this project, there was also an archaeological review, so dating back to 2005 for a previous proposal, there was an archaeological review that was prepared as a part of that project. So when the Ganya proposal came in last year, as well as when this proposal came in, staff visited with the state archaeologists, asked them to review that document, and they have completed that review and determined that that study is still relevant and acceptable, and that any development moving forward would do so without any risk of adverse impact based on, based on that study. Commissioner Farr previously asked about the neighborhood meeting. In addition to a neighborhood meeting, when applications come into the city, we also provide those details out to other agencies for their review. So that might be Hennepin County, or the airport, or the watershed district. And the city did receive comment back from the airport late this afternoon. It was after all of the information had been emailed out to the Planning Commission, so I'm speaking to it verbally for you tonight. But the airport did send comment that asked the city to reconsider land use of single-family residential on this property. However, if the city chooses to move forward, excuse me, forward with single-family residential development, they asked for several considerations along the lines of notification to future homeowners that there is an airport in the proximity, that noise attenuation and mitigation be provided in the homes to be constructed. This is standard language that we receive on these types of developments from the MAC Commission. If you'll remember, the Prairie Heights development over on Pioneer Trail, and Pioneer Trail that recently went through, it, very similar comments were provided on that project. And as a part of our standard development agreement, we do include language that addresses notification of the proximity of the airport, noise attenuation, things of, things of that sort, for any development that occurs within a specified distance of the airport. In addition to the neighborhood meeting that was previously talked about, as a part of your packet or on the table this evening, you've been provided 35 written comments that the city has received via email from a variety of residents, some Eden Prairie residents, some not Eden Prairie residents. We've also received two calls from people who shared their concern about the project but did not want to participate in the meeting, either in person, virtually, or provide written comments, but wanted staff to be aware of their concern about the project, and general opposition concern about the spring. And we do have, as you can see, several folks who have signed up to speak this evening and share their concerns. The majority of the concerns that staff has reviewed in, in the comments that have been provided and calls that we have taken have focused around the spring. So as previously mentioned, this spring is not on the property that is proposed for development. The spring is on a separate piece of property that is under the ownership of the city. In addition, the spring was designated as a local heritage site some time ago, which allows it certain protections under the city's zoning ordinance. As a part of that, part of that, we wanted to reiterate to the commission that there are not any changes proposed to the spring. There would be no change in operation, no development of the spring. It would continue to be accessible and available as it is, as it is today.
I have a question.
Just bear with us. Just a few more, just bear with us a few more minutes, and we'll open up for public comment, please.
So as I said, the city has received several comments about the spring. We have tried to address them by forwarding them on to you, as well as answering questions and comments as they have come into the city. Staff does recommend approval of the subdivision and the project as proposed to you this evening, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thanks, Julie. Any initial questions for Julie? Commissioner Kirk?
Julie, I'd like to, since we have representatives from the city engineering and city parks and recreation, I'd just like to solicit if they had any additional comments, particularly relative to the spring. I know it's been stated several different ways, but they're the experts that I've, I've grown to trust in, in these areas. So if they, if they are interested or willing to make a comment.
Can I get your answer?
Just bear with us a few more minutes. I will, I will open it up, and I'm gonna go through a list of people first, please.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, as has been stated a few times now that there are no changes proposed for the spring, we'll still operate it the way it has. As far as kind of the, the water being affected in there, as has been stated as well, the, the spring is actually located on the west side of Spring Road, so north and west of where the outlet is, fed by pipe underneath Spring Road, then under the parking lot to where its current location is. So any development on this east side and on the other side of the creek, you know, as, as we've said, should not have any impact on the spring water itself.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I could speak a little bit about the EAW that was done about 10 years ago. So about 10 years ago, there was a proposal, or at least a, a looking at how to make that area over on Eden Prairie Road and Prospect Road, how to connect some of the roads in that area. So there were a number of alternatives that were studied, including extending Eden Prairie Road down the hill, extending Eden Prairie Road to the east to connect with Spring Road, Prospect Road extending over to Eden Prairie Road, a number of different alternatives. And as part of that EAW, there was discussion in that EAW about the spring, about if Prospect Road or any of those other road connections would impact the spring. And there was some language in that EAW that was transmitted or copied into, or paraphrased, I guess, into the staff report. So that, that EAW resulted in no impact the, for those road extensions on the west side of Spring Road to the spring itself.
Thank you. Other initial questions for the city?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Commissioner Gooding?
Julie, in your, if this project is approved, one items is related to wall costs for maintenance and a few factors, and you talk about making sure that it's not leaves the city, and you set up the coverage. With the Minnesota Common Interest Law, considering some of those walls are totally on private property, they sort of limit them to thousands, including the biggest and most defensible. Nine homeowners would share the cost of making some big repairs, not the entire association. So, you know, there's laws capitalizing on this development. So for future homeowners and people in the property, they have fairly significant liability if something happens, and I'd like your comments on that.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, so in your staff report, we do discuss the fact that there are multiple retaining walls provided within the proposed plan, and the language in your staff report notes that, should the development move forward, the development agreement would contain language that the maintenance and responsibility of those retaining walls would fall on the homeowners' association, rather than on the city as a part of their location, as Commissioner Gooding noted, on private property. Now, how those homeowners' association documents are drafted, as to how they assign, for lack of a better word, financial responsibility to whether it's homeowners overall, or certain groups of homeowners that are more impacted, the development agreement won't speak to that specificity, but rather, the development agreement will note that it will be a requirement, that that be a private matter that's handled between the homeowners' association and the property owners, that the city will not be responsible for maintaining those retaining walls long-term.
Thank you.
Other questions from the commission before I go to a public hearing? Mr. Chair?
Yeah, Commissioner Farr?
I have four questions. First is, Julie, could you just dive into the weeds a little bit more about the street connection potentially to the east to Junegrass Lane? I know this was discussed a year ago in that development opportunity. We see on the existing conditions plan that there's apparently like a right-of-way there, but it's called private. So I believe that's the reason why, but I don't want to put words in your mouth, is that the reason why we can't force a connection at this point in time? Because it's, we have a public right-of-way on, on this project's side of the fence, and on the Hennepin Village side, do we have a private street that we don't have influence over? Am I stating that right?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Commissioner Farr, I would defer that question to Rod Ruth, city engineer.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, the, you are correct, in that this development would have a public right-of-way up to the property line of Hennepin Village. You know, within Hennepin Village, there, the, there's an outlot there, I believe it is, that's owned by the association, master association. So the desire is to have the developer work with the master homeowners' association to get, to gain rights to make that connection. We do have a drainage and utilitiesment over that corridors, because the utilities are actually maintained by the city, but the street is not. So the developer can, can easily connect to the water connection, water main there, to make that loop. But the street connection and/or trail connection, emergency vehicle connection would be, have to be negotiated and agreed upon by the homeowners' association.
Okay, thank you. So if I can summarize last year's development concerns, when we talked about this same topic, it would be a general recommendation of the city to minimize cul-de-sac dead-end lengths by having this connection for safety. But in absence thereof, the fire department has recommended that this, this would be an okay situation. It doesn't compromise the safety of the residents of this future development, nor adjacent residents. Is that a fair statement?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Thank you for that. Second, Julie, maybe you know, or maybe somebody else does, a lot of concerns about the spring, of course, but just the, the visual and usefulness of the spring area. There's a nice walking path leading up the hill, pedestrian bridge over Riley Creek, leading to a bluff overlook pathway on the south side of Hennepin Village for quite a distance. Is it true that that path will remain available to the public for use, or is that on private property and the use will be somehow terminated?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, that is a city trail. That's one of our nature trails, part of the Prairie Bluff Conservation Area, and that will remain. There's no plans to, to make any changes to that. The only change would be a trail going from this development to the existing asphalt path that's part of that, that same trail, trail corridor.
Good, good. So that, that path will remain as an asset to that area. Okay, thank you. Retaining walls have been discussed a few times. Last year, we remember a discussion about retaining wall materials. I believe that there was some boulder retaining wall materials that were requested of the developer last time to match what's going on in the entrance to Hennepin Village neighborhood. And I didn't see what the retaining wall materials were proposed to be, but is that detail something that has been discussed or agreed to already?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, that is a detail that city staff would continue to work with the developer on as the, as the development process proceeds through the public review process.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I just didn't want to lose track of that, that fine point, then. At last, Mr. Chair, if you don't mind me, ask one more question, then. I sense a fair amount of skepticism about government, maybe in general, tonight, and, and the applicant's comments about the, the spring and the surrounding stormwater management. And I'd like someone to just speak to the rigor of the jurisdictional review process, in addition to the city engineering experts that we have and know and trust, about the watershed districts' reviews, and, and how those provide a layer of protection for us, and, and that additional layer of expertise, and their, their overarching concerns for our natural water bodies. Who wants to take that?
Was that correct, was that question directed to staff or developer?
To the staff. I, I think, I think we need to assume that there's a fair amount of skepticism on the answers that the developer has given, based on the turnout tonight. So I'm looking for expert advice, recommendations, and reviews that have been done. You mentioned already, there's been an environmental assessment worksheet, EAW, environmental assessment worksheet, done in the area for another reason, about 10 years ago. And I would like to, for the record, hear what the rigor of jurisdictional reviews has been on water resources in general for this project and potentially the project that came before us a year ago.
Well, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, the, I don't know a lot of the details at this point, but the, our staff person who reviews these has been in, has, has had conversations with the developers, engineer, and the watershed district. I don't, I don't believe they've, if they've submitted an application to the watershed district, it's probably been very recent. It might be going concurrently with, their approval might be going concurrently with ours. But in most of these cases, the, the requirements for both the watershed district and the city are pretty rigorous, and there are multiple ponds on this site. There are four ponds total, some of which are in series. So one, one pond outlet gets treated at the next outlet, or the next pond, I should say, before it discharges into the wetland, which is adjacent to the creek. So there's a number of BMPs, as we, as we call them, best management practices, that are in place, or will be in place, with this development that'll clean the water and through the series of ponds before it enters the creek and wetland.
Mr. Ruth, Commissioner, if I could ask you a question for you about the possibility of a plant, a flood. We can go warming and might hold, are you prepared to buffer against a potential downpour, say a five, six, seven-inch downpour in one event? How would that, how would that be impacting this development, proposed development?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, the, part of the, part of the analysis that goes into any of these developments, particularly when it involves a creek, the watershed district has a, what they call an inundation, inundation model, which is the, I don't want to get too technical, but it's basically a, a more than a 100-year event. It's about a 500-to-1,000-year event, which is about, in this area, is about 10 inches of rain, I believe, 10 to 10 and a half inches of rain. So they model that, and, and they have a, they've modeled the whole watershed district, and they look at those models when they do all these developments to make sure that if there is an area that could be inundated with, with that kind of event, it's tried, they protect that area and, for floodplain. So in this case, I'm sure there'd be a rise in the, in the 100-year level beyond what they show in the plan here, but it wouldn't be significant. And that would be looked at as part of the watershed district permit.
All right. Now seeing any, any other questions from the commission, I'm gonna open up a public hearing. Just a few, I guess, ground rules. We, I'd really like to get to everybody, so we want your voice heard on the record if you'd like to speak. So we just asked that, if you could keep it under five minutes. But if, what we're gonna do is go through everybody and listen to everyone, kind of drop some themes, and then we'll make sure that we have some discussion about each of those items, and try to get some more detail and more discussion around each of those items. I'm gonna go through, I, there's a couple signup sheets. Looks like a couple more are coming. So I'll go through, and people have listed yes or no to speak. I will just go through the yeses, and at the end, I'll go to anyone on the phone, and then if someone marked no, and they decided they want to speak after, I'll then if someone marked no and they decided they want to speak after, I'll, I'll just open up for people to come up to the podium at that time. All right, let's see. So, I apologize in advance if I mispronounce your name. It's either my eyesight or I can't read it, so. Rebecca Prochaska?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Oh, I actually have that on the record here, so.
Oh, you do? Okay. So, Mr. Commissioner, committee members, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I have a slide deck, Julie, do you have that? Can we have the PowerPoint, please? Perfect. Are we? Yep, you're good. Go ahead. Okay, okay. So, we, we are here to urge the committee to deny the request of rezoning from rural to urban, and, oh, it looks like it's, could you advance to the next one, or I don't, I think you have control, I can't. So, again, we are formally requesting that you deny the request of rezoning for this particular site from rural to urban, and we have over 1,087 petition signatures as of 7:30 a.m. this morning that do support this request. So, before we get into the details, I wanted to take a step back and just talk about some facts about this 28-acre site. If you look to the Hennepin County Natural Resources inventory maps and do some research there, you will find that this specific site is uniquely important. And when I say uniquely, what you'll find is it has a biodiversity significance rating that is, is high. It contains an ecologically significant area, which only occurs in one-fourth of all of our City of Eden Prairie. It has groundwaters that are rated high to highly vulnerable to contamination. And what, something else that we, we realized through our research that was really telling that you may not be aware of, sorry, does that help? I feel like that's.
You can pull it closer.
Okay.
Please speak into the microphone.
Okay, is that better? Okay. This site is also designated as an important bird and biological area. Specifically, it's part of the Lower Minnesota River Valley IBA. And what that means, Mr. Chair and Commissioner, Commission members, excuse me, committee members, is that this site in particular is a place of international significance for the conservation of birds and biodiversity. And so, this combination of factors that I pointed out here, as well as this information, knowing that this site has international significance because of the biodiversity, that should be grounds enough to not support a rezoning. Moving on, so, what is the impact, right? So, we know that this is special, a special area, right, because of its biodiversity. So, what would be the impact of changing, you know, two homes from the rural zoning to an intensive build of 50? Let's take a step back and think. Well, that would include also removing 500 trees. What is the impact of that? Well, we, we heard a multitude of concerns from the community and others about a variety of things. And so, in order to simplify it for you all this evening, we, we rolled it up into three main themes: environment, safety, and community. So, there's been some talk about the spring this evening, and as you can see, it's a cherished site for many who live in Eden Prairie and outside. People come from miles around to drink the, the water. We know that the city does perform bacteria tests, and that's about it. And I think it's important to note, because it's been a topic of debate, that while the spring may not be directly affected by the project, any further development of the Riley Creek watershed, which that site is on, places the, the spring at, at a high risk. And I'll get into that here if we can advance. So, a couple things of concern about the Riley Creek watershed. It is currently in a very poor state today. Tax dollars has been invested and are currently being invested to restore it to a better condition. And if you see specifically here, it's called the Lower Riley Creek Ecological Restoration Project, for reference. Another point of concern for this watershed is it is already considered impaired by the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. And by increasing impervious area, which is buildings, parking lots, streets, and other, other surfaces, we know that, that that, along with removing forest, which Noble Hill Project will do, will make it more difficult to restore Riley Creek to a higher-quality condition. So, where are we getting these facts from? Well, if you go to the, from the U.S. Geological Survey Spring Stat Site, a couple of alarming things I wanted to point you to, to support our position why the spring may be at risk because of its tie to the Riley Creek watershed. So, as you guys may be aware, it does drain a 10-mile, a 10-mile square watershed. 22% of Riley Creek is already impervious, which I just described what that means. And we know that stream quality impairment begins at 10%, and unfortunately, when it hits 25%, it may not be possible to restore. Riley Creek is at 22%. So, we are on the verge of being to a place where we cannot restore the water quality there. Going back, the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency has, I didn't mention this, has considered it impaired for aquatic recreation and aquatic life because it is in such a degraded state. Another point to note is forest cover is only 15% of the site of the Riley Creek watershed. Excuse me, I'm trying to get through this fast, so I hope I'm not, I hope everyone can hear me. We know that a minimum of 40% of forest cover is needed to preserve stream quality. So, that in itself demonstrates that we know that the, the spring is already at risk. We're investing tax dollars to try and restore it. And any more development and increase in impervious surface, reduction in forest, will directly impact that watershed, which will in turn potentially put that spring water at risk. So, we're asking again, please don't make restoration of our water, Riley Creek, more difficult by allowing the rezoning of a very intense development like the proposed Noble Hill site. We talked a little bit about the trees. I do think it's important to define what trees they are, right? There's a lot of different trees. So, the, the proposal that I viewed from, from the developer says 456 significant or heritage trees are to be removed. I'd like to point your attention to the definition. So, by definition, a heritage tree is irreplaceable. Now, I know the developer. I know that there is some, I don't know if, lack of a better word, concessions made. It looks like the tree count went up a little bit, but I want to make sure that it's very clear that the, the trees that I, that we reviewed would be planted around the edge of the proposed lots, and they will not compensate for the loss of habitat and other benefits the existing forest provides. The reduction in forest cover will directly increase Noble Hill's impact to the land groundwater and the Riley Creek watershed. Okay, so, really quick, this isn't the dense part of some of the, the forest there, but just wanted to show you a significant tree example. They are very tall. These things, you know, it's not a little tree farm that's been operating in the last couple of years where, you know, we're taking things down. These are irreplaceable, special trees. And I think we all know that tree loss means habitat loss, and habitat loss remains one of the greatest threats to wildlife and birds here in the state of Minnesota. Matter of fact, 20% of our birds in the state are at risk. But I'm asking the planning commission, planning commission members to be, be a part of change and knowing that this is a special, critical, internationally designated site for critical bird habitat, to partner with us to help change that number and conserve what we can. Just wanted to point out too, sorry, Julie, these are some of the various wildlife and flowers, or sorry, plants that you can find around the Miller Spring area and on that All right, I think it's important to call attention to this as well. There has been records of two plant species of concern in the vicinity. One was mentioned already this evening, the kitten tail is listed, listed as threatened, and the prim, evening primrose is a, is a species of special concern. Okay, moving on to the second theme, and we have two, two or three more left, and then I'll wrap up. So, safety. I want to point your attention to the excerpt at the top where it says evaluation taken from the city's environmental assessment worksheet. I'll quickly read this. This is the south end road of Eden Prairie, of Spring Road. The roadway is curved and sloped and is difficult to maintain in the winter. It has been the location of several accidents. There are five major deficiencies affecting safe operation of the south end of this road, which you can see are listed here. I want to call your attention to the first one, site distance limitation through curves. We did a site test at the proposed access road, the main entryway, doing a site distance time test with cars approaching from the southwest or left side, if you will, and unfortunately, it, it did not pass. It was under the 10-second rule, therefore, unfortunately, it, it's a very, it's a safety hazard for cars driving that way and turning, they just don't have enough time. And then, moving on to the last one is community support. What you'll see here, members of the planning committee, is our community support to date. We just started this petition not too long ago, but you'll see kind of this bird's-eye view as of, naturally, we have tons of people right around the Eden Prairie area who are very concerned. But as you'll see, that this area is special to many people, not just that live here, but live outside of the city. And I think it's a unique opportunity that you have, because you don't, usually, we don't have this, I don't, I don't think, I'm not a committee member, but where you have metro-wide or statewide support to preserve a certain parcel of land. So, hopefully, you have the opportunity to hear from a few of them on why that's important this evening. So, in summary, again, we urge you to recommend a denial of the rezoning from rural to urban for the property in question and why. This site is unique. It has a high biodiversity significance that occurs in only one-fourth of our city. This project would directly make it more difficult to restore Riley Creek, which the citizens have been, we've used tax dollars to, to fund, and I'm sure it's going to be an ongoing project. This project would indirectly, through the, through the watershed, or excuse me, through the development of Riley Creek, place Frederick Miller Spring at risk. We talked about the many negative impacts of removing a large part of the forest, 456 significant or heritage trees. These aren't little Christmas trees, again, want to, that was brought up earlier. This site contains critical bird habitat. I urge you to, if you consult with the DNR, the Audubon, they have a program, a statewide program, that says this area up, including north of the site, is critical bird habitat. If you know, the Minnesota River is less than two miles away, it's a Mississippi flyaway, there's a ton of international migrating birds that come through there, and I'm really disappointed that this is the first time it's coming up. So, obviously, to protect the wildlife and plant species, and then safety hazards, right? We pointed out five deficiencies on that road. The inadequate site distances is of, is of concern, as well as just the mechanics of how curvy it is. And then, you know, we urge you to listen to your community. We have 1,087 people to date who are asking you not to rezon this based on these factors. So, in the spirit of the last quote, I'd say, "Let's work together to preserve the city's remaining prairie lands and woodlands for future generations." Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Prochaska. Nice presentation.
Thank you.
All right, Glenn Elo.
Good evening. Hello. I'd like to thank the Eden Prairie Planning Commission for the opportunity to speak tonight regarding the proposed Pulte development. My name is Glenn Elo. I am treasurer of the Board of Directors for the Hennepin Village Master Association. Our president, Ken Dedeker, had planned to be at your meeting tonight, but because of an urgent family matter that required Ken's immediate attention, I was asked to speak in his place. The Board of Directors for the Hennepin Village Master Association and the affected sub-association have not yet taken any vote on a final position of Hennepin Village on any matters associated with the development at issue. Thus, my comments should only be considered as preliminary. Of course, there is some concern about loss of view to the west by those current owners living on the western border of Hennepin Village. However, it is generally recognized this is probably inevitable and likely cannot be avoided. That being said, we do have a primary area of concern as it relates to the proposed trail connecting to Junegrass Lane and Hennepin Village. We understand that the new development should have at least two access points for emergency vehicles. We further understand that the developer has proposed a pedestrian slash biking trail 10 to 12 feet wide that would connect to Junegrass Lane and Hennepin Village, with signs to indicate that the trail prohibits non-emergency vehicular traffic. We understand that the trail as currently proposed would permit emergency vehicles' access to the new development via Junegrass Lane and Hennepin Village. Hennepin Village is greatly concerned that the width of the proposed trail, including the necessary fill, is likely to encroach on the sub-association-owned property on both sides of the trail, and two, the property owned by the Hennepin Village Master Association this proposed trail will cross will most certainly be affected. As such, Hennepin Village asserts that the proposed trail will require the developer to either purchase such property from the applicable Hennepin Village Association owners, or two, obtain easements from the Hennepin Village Association owners regarding the property. In the alternative, Hennepin Village is willing to discuss the making of a connection to Junegrass Lane into a full, into a full street, then meet city specifications if the city would also assume control of Junegrass Lane from that point to Pin Cherry and onto Leitres. On another matter, Hennepin Village is comfortable on a preliminary basis with the proposed version of water flowing from the southern border along the joint property line to the proposed trail street being directed into a storm sewer at the trail's street point. To be clear, however, Hennepin Village is not willing to assume any obligations, responsibilities, or cost related to the construction, snow plowing, grass mowing, or other maintenance costs for any proposed trail or street by the developer. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Thank you for comments.
Thank you for comments. Chesney Inquest.
Good evening.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for your careful attention this evening. Staff, thank you so much for all of the work that you have done to facilitate this conversation and allow us this opportunity to discuss our intentions around Noble Hill, around Riley Creek, and around Frederick Miller Spring. I'm a resident of South Minneapolis, I travel regularly to visit the spring. I do this for my physical health, my mental health, my spiritual health, my emotional health, and the health of my community. When I arrived at the spring, there are a few practices that I try to remember. One of those practices is gratitude. One of those practices is patience. One of those is connection. And one of those is grieving. When I visit the spring, I see members of my community caring for one another and the environment. I see garbage in the water. I take the time to clean this body of water. I've heard some information this evening that I don't believe I can agree with. I believe that it's true that every body of water is connected. I'm a body of water, you're a body of water, the spring is a body of water. And I believe that inherently, obviously, intuitively, intelligently, scientifically, it is apparent that disturbing the contiguous habitat above the spring and the creek will cause damage to my health, to your health, to health of the community, to the health of the wildlife. There is precedent globally for community to take over forestry practices when they're willing to collaborate with municipalities in order to benefit the health of all. There is something so noble about this hill that will change, that is changing, and I would like to say thank you to the family who has stewarded the green space around this body of water for so many years. The spirit of Christmas that has surrounded this creek, I commit to carrying with me each time I visit, each time I drink of the water. That spirit of unity and community is what I am here to speak to today. I appreciate your listening, I appreciate your consideration, and I look forward to ongoing communications and conversations so that we may all take the time to pause and become still, if not at the spring, here now, and we can listen to the voice of the water. I have brought a bit of the spring with today. I have met many friends of the spring, thank you for being here. Thank you to those who join us online. If you would, with me now, practice just for a few moments, this gratitude, this connection, this silence, and this listening. Lastly, thank you so much, Sue and Rebecca, for your call to action and for alerting me to the opportunity to speak on behalf of what is true, that together we have a beautiful opportunity to maintain this forest, this contiguous habitat, and the health of this body of water. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Russ Inquest.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you very much for holding this public hearing on such an important matter. Look, I'm not as eloquent as some of these other speakers, and so I'm just going to say this very plainly. If you believe that the road salts, pesticides, and fertilizers from any new development put above the creek and the, and the spring will not affect the water quality in the spring, then I've got a double-decker outhouse that I think you're going to love. Okay? Shit rolls downhill. Pesticides and fertilizers and road salt are all going to end up in the water down the hill. And we're not a bunch of fools who are going to listen to a bunch of lies and believe them. It's obvious, it's clear, the creek will be impacted. Now, I am passionate about the environment. In 2017, I started Be Safe Minnesota, an organization to help promote and protect pollinators around the state. And as a part of that organization, we go around and we educate, my wife Chesney and I would go around and educate school kids and all kinds of municipalities and organizations and churches and, and communities around, around pollinator protection, eliminating pesticides. And I can tell you that the kids that we talk to, they get it. And they know, they understand that now, during 6X, the sixth great extinction on the planet, during a time of massive climate upheaval, these kids know that the world needs heroes. And you, my friends, will all get to wake up tomorrow morning and look in the mirror, and you'll either get to see a hero, or you'll get to see someone who's robbing our children of their future. May you make a good decision.
Thanks for your comments. I think it's Ronald O'Sedley? Ronald? O'Sealy?
Good evening. Well, as I realize, there's five topics here that should be considered.
Mr. Sealy, would you mind pulling your microphone closer to you, then people will be able to hear you better? Thank you, sir.
As I realize here, there's five topics. The zoning swap is a possibility. And there's, I might say, there's endangered flora on the area. And there's about 450 trees. And also, the H2O movement is vulnerable to intrusive houses. And the, there's a lot of antler type, a lot of the antle type in the area. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So I can't tell Ms. Thomas, I can't tell if it was a yes or no to speak. Okay. Talbot Stevens?
Can I ask a question?
Just bear with us, we're working through the people in person. Ms... Talbot Stevens? No. Maggie Schmitz? Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I am a resident of Eden Prairie and I work at C.H. Robinson, which is obviously very close to the proposed development. I came here to speak with you all today as a concerned citizen.
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
Yes, sorry, getting used to it a little bit. My partner and I strategically chose to build our lives in the Eden Prairie community for a few reasons. Close to family, great school district for our future children, and one of them was the spring and the area around the spring, and what we perceived as Eden Prairie's commitment to preserving the environmental area around the spring. I drink from the spring, I'm concerned about water quality, and I know that there are a lot of people here today that will speak to you about that. Commissioner Farr, I really appreciated your questioning around kind of describing what the process looks like when you're reviewing how the environment will be impacted by this. I would like to urge this group to review the EAW from 2007 and how it could be different now, knowing that this is a housing development rather than a road, and that it's 14 years later, especially given some of the information that Rebecca shared around how the water quality of Riley Creek has changed and is nearing that irreversible impact situation. The other piece I would like to urge you to review is that I feel that you don't have all of the information. There has not been the wildlife study done that needs to be done in the spring to understand what trees and what animals will be impacted, and we're working off of outdated information based off of the EAW from 14 years ago. The last piece I will say is that I understand through the staff report that an EIS is not required because it's not enough houses, right? You were saying that needs to be a thousand, a thousand units for that type of review, and I understand that, but I also think that there is a special situation with the wildlife, the watershed, and the spring here that maybe needs a little bit more review. So I'm here to implore you as a resident of this community to please review this information in more detail and take the time prior to recommending approval for city council. Thank you.
Thank you for comments. All right. Patricia Aiden? Oden? Patricia? I'm sorry, I think I butchered your last name. Owen, okay, I did. Good evening.
I think I was the only Patricia on there, so assuming that was me. Hello, my name is Patricia Owen. My husband Dan and I and our family have lived in Eden Prairie for 32 years. My statement today is to urge the planning commission to recommend that the city council retain the current rural zoning of the proposed Noble Hill development site. And I have listed some statistics about the watershed and about Riley Creek that other people have stated, so I'm not going to state those again. But the bottom line here, for me and for my family, is the possible risk to this unique treasure that's part of our community. I brought along visual aids. Many of you know this book, written by Marie Wittenberger, and, or Wittenberg, and this spring has been known about for hundreds of years, before the European-American settlers arrived. It's a treasure. If you go there to the spring, you will see people from all over the metro area, as we've heard, and we will continue to hear, and from even further away. For example, there is a guy from Northfield who makes the trip every week to fill his car trunk with jugs of spring water. There are grandparents coming with their grandkids to fill up water bottles and jugs. They are carrying on a tradition that they've had for decades. You will see your friends and neighbors, like me, who will tell you that the spring water makes the best coffee, bar none. It's a community treasure, and the loss of this would be incalculable. I understand that there are no, maybe direct things that are directly going to be affecting the Frederick Miller Spring, but there is no guarantee on this. The spring is located within the watershed, and the things that other people have mentioned tonight, like impervious surfaces and reduced forest cover, are going to impact the entire watershed, including the spring area. Now, the benefit of the Noble Hill development of 50 housing units will be a benefit to a relatively small number of people and business interests, whereas the Frederick Miller Spring in that area is a benefit to the entire community and the surrounding areas. Likewise, not building the Noble Hill development would impact a very small group of people and business interests, whereas the loss of the features in that area would be a loss felt by our community, not only now, but for generations to come. It almost could be summarized as something which would privatize the benefits but socialize the losses. The benefits would accrue to a very small number of people. The losses would be felt by the entire community. That's a risk that I don't think we should take, and I'm pleased asking you to take that into account in your consideration. And just one more thing, incidentally, today is World Water Day, March 22nd. World Water Day is an annual United Nations observance focusing on the importance of fresh water. The focus of today's, or this year's World Water Day, is the value of water. I don't think there could be a more appropriate day for having this particular discussion. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Ted Hanners?
Good evening.
Good evening. I'll try and speak quickly and simply. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. We can maybe pull it just a little bit. You can pull it forward to you.
Pull it to me? Okay.
Thank you.
It's an honor to be here with you and it's an honor to speak on behalf of the spring and the water. And as an earth person, I want to speak for the spring. And the bottom line to me is simple. We've used the term develop or developer. It's already developed. To me, the term or the word develop in this situation is a politically correct way of saying mass killer. It's a harsh way to look at it, but the trees, the wildlife, and all of the things that have been spoken are at risk, and mass killing is not okay in my book, and I'm speaking on behalf of the water. Thank you very much, and I'll be done.
Thank you for your comments. I'm sorry, Ms. Blythe, it wasn't checked if you'd like to speak or not? Just to confirm? No, okay. Paige Carlson? Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you so much for letting me speak. I'd just like to state that right away. I'm very young for my age to be speaking in front of people like you, not to be mean, but I just wanted to say that, yeah, just state that. So, my name is Sophia, and I'd like to say a couple things about the earth and regarding the spring too. The world is losing 137 species of plants, animals, and insects every day to deforestation. A horrifying 500,000 species become extinct each year. Deforestation Deforestation in Minnesota mostly happens due to the development of roads, houses, and buildings. And also, 5 million animals each year die to deforestation. If we are losing trees and land, the land will heat up and dry, causing failed harvesting years. Over the years, there has been a dramatic decrease in forests. The loss of trees can cause climate change, desertification, soil erosion, fewer crops, flooding, increased greenhouse gases in the atmosphere, and much more. I have been going to the Frederick Miller Springs since I was very, very young. Lots of memories were made there with my family. We get water there from the spring, and I care for the environment. Yes, taking down 455 trees won't be much, although this may be true. I hope for my future self and for my children to have a good future. I hope my children will have a happy life so they won't have to deal with this when they grow up. Pollution and deforestation is a huge problem nowadays that many people don't very look at. So I'm just going to say that whenever you take something small, it always will turn into something way bigger. So if we don't fix something now, then in the future, it may turn into something so big that we can't fix it later. So that's all. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commission members, and staff. It's nice to be here tonight. I'm here, I live at 15900 Flying Cloud Drive at the intersection of Spring Road and Flying Cloud Drive. This property that's proposed tonight was my uncle's farm, and my dad and my uncle and his siblings were born just up where Hennepin Village is. And so we're, we have some familiarity there in the area over the years. And I'm here tonight to speak in favor of this project. I believe in landowner rights. I appreciate all of the comments, the many comments and the concerns that have been raised here tonight, and of people that visit this spring and what a resource it is. But I think that not only the neighborhood, but the community has put great value on that spring, and we've demonstrated that over the years with the activities and the care of it. And I've, as a landowner and a neighbor there, I appreciate that. I value that, just as the people have speaking here tonight. And I see a water jug there. It's interesting, my dad, when he was at the University of Minnesota Hospital at the end of his life, he asked for a jug of water from the spring. So those folks here, they speak well of that spring water, and we appreciate that. But I also believe in landowner rights, and these landowner rights is what finances our abilities to take care of these treasures that we have in our communities, and we need that. We need that tax base, and we welcome our neighbors wherever they are. And it brings in, I heard the word, I believe it was Commissioner Farr that mentioned it tonight, the word expertise. And expertise is very important, and we have the expertise here in Eden Prairie at our staff level, at our elected officials' level, and we value that, we appreciate that, and we need that, we depend on that. We also depend on that to protect our landowner rights as well. And I'm here tonight to speak in favor of that. I believe that 50 units is, it's a reduced number from what it was, and I believe the city, as I understand, the approach tonight, as it was provided here to the audience and to the commission, that it was, you know, it's the engineers and the conservation, the watershed district, everyone's involved, always are in these kinds of projects, and in order for our community to afford that and have that expertise, we need a tax base. And we also need a tax base because then we can have, we can acquire areas and we can have our parkland areas and our open spaces and do the best we can, not only for our open spaces, but for our schools, our police protection, our fire departments, our staff, our community. And we need that, and therefore, I'm in favor of this project, and thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate all of the comments here and their care. I know we all share that care here in Eden Prairie. Anyone out of Eden Prairie, they have no idea how much we care for it here in Eden Prairie, so thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thanks for your comments this evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Just want to say thank you for hearing us out. I come from Minneapolis, South Minneapolis, and I've been coming to...
I'm sorry, could you pull your mic down? I think people are having trouble here in the interim.
I'm from South Minneapolis, and I've been coming to Frederick Springs for most of my life, my parents, my grandparents. I now bring my children. I bring other people from parts of the city that don't get to experience this kind of biodiversity and, you know, where actually living waters come from. It's such a big opportunity to, in the times we're living in right now and the changes that are being made everywhere, I mean, we are land of 10,000 freshwater lakes, and this is decreasing everywhere. I would love for Minnesota to lead by example. I mean, and today being National Water Day, it says something. And a lot of these, really, you know, the older studies, like, technology picks up and, you know, over a decade and a half, a lot can change. And like the homework, just if we want to talk about pollinators, there's more pollinators than you could ever count, and April 1st isn't going to show you that. Some pollinators have less than a 24-hour lifespan. They go months and months. It's a beautiful area. From the water, the pollinators, you can look all around these areas, and you can tell that the minerals that are provided by the springs are feeding them. They're huge, they're happy, they're greater than many places you can even find in Minnesota. And it's not just surrounding areas that come to Frederick Springs, it's out of state. To chance any of this, we're just, we're not picking up what you're laying down, and science shows it. I wish we could expand on conservation and the teaching, and there's something to be said in tourism. I mean, look at the research, look at all the state parks, look at where people are getting out and what they're doing, what are they interested in? This is what they want. The people have spoken, they're looking for this, they're looking for change. And time and time again, we come to this, and the timing is poorly. Minnesota's been through enough, and to kind of, in the middle of a pandemic after all this uprise, it just, it doesn't make me proud. I think it would have to be a disgrace to travel to the nearest spring in, like, Harrow Ward, Wisconsin. So, yeah, it's not just statewide. People travel from out of states for this area, and I think that there's a beautiful chance to expand on that. And I just want to thank you, and I appreciate it and hope you take it into consideration.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening.
Good evening. Mine's going to kind of give clarification of where this project's at. I was understanding there's only one proposal, now there's three, right? No, there's three different sections that's going to be proposed?
Well, we can get you clarification through the discussion if you'd like.
Right. My first question is, has everybody been out there to take a look at this site? Has any of the council members been there?
Absolutely.
My question is, so I can get a clarification, because I did not get to go out there. What I'd like to do is, right in front of me is the water, you know, the faucet where you pick up, get the water. In front of me is a mountain, and what my question is, nobody's going to touch that site there, right? That's off limits forever. Okay, that's good. Okay, now behind me, is that where the project is proposed? Back behind me? Where is the proposal I have from the front of that? If I'm standing here right in front of the fountain, where is the project from there? So I get an idea?
Sure. Julie, oh, right on to you, thank you.
I'm trying to pull up the screen, hold, give me a second here. Okay. Okay.
Can you leave that picture up there just for a second?
Yep.
Okay. From what I can see right now from that project, okay, that's where the project is, and where that arrow is pointing, is that exactly where the fountain is?
Mr. Chair, may I answer?
Yes, of course. Thanks, Julie.
So where this big blue arrow is pointing to is the spring location? So that's where there's the little parking lot where you would be collecting the water?
Yep. So then the project, the main project is behind me on the other side of the road?
Correct. So if you look at this, the three different properties that are proposed to be part of the development are shown here. There's three individual parcels. The majority of the development is going to happen on Parcels 1 and 2 because a large part of the third parcel here would be reserved as an outlot, and no development would occur on that portion of the property.
All right. Okay, the first thing I'd like to point out is, the project that's behind, the proposed project is up by arrow to the right, to the right?
Yes.
Nope.
Right up here?
Up here? Yeah. Those... Those places right there, the majority of the project that's going on right now, most of those lots are empty. You know, there is no additional building going on that I can see. I don't know how long the proposed project has been on that and who has it, but it seems like there's a lot of empty lots that they could probably put some of these houses in. And why should they destroy that project, you know, the proposal until they fill up the other house, the other project's, you know, sites? Okay. I'm just seeing that there's proposals on the other sites where they haven't finished the projects they've already started. Why should we just let, allow them to come in and destroy that property for, you know, for a future project when they haven't finished the project that they already started? And on this project, the proposed site, the number three, in the center one, is that where the water table is, the watershed is? Is it underneath that project right there?
Julie, do you want to answer?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, maybe Rod Rue can help answer that question a little bit better than I can.
The question was about groundwater or what?
The watershed, is it underneath the project itself?
Well, the whole, that whole area is in one watershed.
Okay, well, then they would be destroying that watershed then. It's plain and simple. I don't know too much, I don't know very much about how watersheds work or anything like that, but if you cover it all up with different, you know, stuff that doesn't allow water to go through, you're going to destroy the ecosystem that's underneath it. And what's going to happen is it's going to fail, and then if the project's a failure, you know, I can't imagine a $250 million or $250,000 house fail, but, you know, everything has a failure factor somewhere. The whole thing is, you know, the lady pointed out, the very first lady, she pointed out some things that I had no idea that was about that site. We should be thinking about the future of all these projects, make sure that we make the right decision, you know, and look at yourself in the mirror tonight, make sure that you talk to yourself, and make that decision that these gentlemen are all, you are all wonderful people, that I can tell. Yeah, but you need to talk to yourself, do we might risk ruining a complete ecosystem, you know, with animals and, you know, bugs and everything else that comes along with it and destroying the water? Let's, you know, let's take a vote, let's take care, make a double, think about it twice before you approve it. And some of the things that they could do to help is, we have a critical shortage of housing for low-income people, people are living on the street, that they have an amendment, that they have a little piece of the pie that goes into a project where in the cities, in inner cities, that they start making places where people can live and sit underneath the bridges and stuff. Other than, you know, to make sure that even though the rich get their what they want and everybody ends up winning. Other than that, I'm done.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for, you know, listening and making eye contact. It's important that you make eye contact, because then you can tell if somebody... Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you so much for hearing me. My name is Teresa Helenan. I live in Golden Valley.
Could you, I'm sorry, could you pull your microphone just a little quick, so people can hear online?
Thank you. My name is Teresa Helenan. I live in the Golden Valley, Minnesota. I like to put "the" just because it's so beautiful. I am here because I've been getting spring water from the Miller Spring for 10 years. It's been a huge lifeline of mine and many people that I know, and I saw that this was up, it's signed "Down by the Spring" is this big, telling people to ask for support and help. I've been down there for three days straight, talking to every person walking in because no one knew this was happening. One in 20 people knew what was going on with this sacred water that we drink. I wish I was better organized, other than just my spirit showed up because I was so freaked out that I might lose this. This is all I drink. I show up down there, I usually go at night because there's always a huge long line. I wish I was better organized and just to get name and where you're coming from, just to show you beautiful people who is showing up in the city, probably getting gas, probably stopping at the gas, you know, all of the above. So this is not just an Eden Prairie thing. Just even here today, right now, I've gone through, and this is people that are standing up just in the building today, standing up and wanting this not to happen. For anyone to think that you do anything in that area that's not going to affect that water, I don't know what school you guys went to. You know, it's all connected, so if we're having all these cars come through, all the salt, the road's not safe. I mean, I loved the first gal that talked so beautifully and eloquently, please take it all in. it all in. Thank you all so much for being here. Thank you for hearing us. Thank you for hearing us. Thank you for looking at your own self and seeing, you know, this is not something that we're just frivolous about. This is something very serious, and 1,000-plus people in like less than a what, a week and a half, two weeks, spoke our voice. Where's the big proposed development sign that was right outside the spring? So people that came from Glencoe, that came from Duluth, that came from Iowa, knew this was happening. No one knew. I stood there and said, "Do you guys know what's happening?" And they're like, "No, what? Why doesn't anyone know about this? Where's the news people?" Do you under, thank you so much. Once again, Teresa Helenin. There's a lot of people speaking, please hear us. Thank you so much.
Thanks for your comments from somewhere. I have Bruce Ferris. Bruce?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for the opportunity to let me speak here this evening about this project, which I am absolutely opposed to. 25 years ago, this coming June, I will have been a resident of Eden Prairie for 25 years. I moved from Florida where I noticed the representative from Polte Homes said they had many developments in that state. One of the reasons I wanted to leave Florida and find some place that was welcoming, moving from Florida to Minnesota, friends of mine had said, "Bruce, what are you doing? You're crazy. You're going up there to the winter?" And they said, "Why on earth would you move to Minnesota?" And I said, "Because up there I can send my children out to play and they're safe. They can go to public schools and they get educated, and I can take money out of an ATM after dark." My career was in the airline industry. So I had to move to a place to get away from Florida. And as long as I was willing to commute by air to a crew base, I could pick anywhere in the United States. I narrowed it down to four states on the basis of research that I did. I flew to each one, rented a car, drove around, and narrowed it down to Minnesota, then to the Minneapolis metro, and then to Eden Prairie. I bought a home in Eden Prairie when I could afford it, and that was 25 years ago. I don't regret for a moment living in Eden Prairie. It's been a pleasure. What I have noticed over the last decade or so, I don't see a development that this town doesn't seem to approve. They, you know, it's a tax base. Well, yeah, well, new residents also come with expenses. They come with, you know, filling our schools, filling our roads. There's something about Eden Prairie that first struck me as being so important, is that it was welcoming and it had a character about it. Character is something that's difficult to define, but over the last 10 years or so, I've noticed the character of the town changing, in large part because of suburban sprawl developments that all look exactly the same. And when I hear that this new proposal is to tear down hundreds and hundreds of trees, I'm just appalled. How could you possibly approve that? I mean, politically, I'm in the middle. I'm not a tree hugger, but I like trees. I've planted them all around my property here in Eden Prairie. And the idea that a development of this size, oh, it's just 50 homes, 50 homes, that's not a small number. You know, and as the gentleman earlier said, you know, stuff runs downhill. I know that, living in Eden Prairie, you know, if I use fertilizer on my lawn, where does it go to? It goes into the sewer system. It's somewhat ironic that up where I live off Del Road, by the water tower up there, there's a sign that the town put up, you know, "Prairie grass, don't walk on this, this is precious." We're reseeding for prairie grasses. So everybody can go home at night and say, "Boy, we care about the environment." And here, you're about to approve something that will tear down hundreds of trees? Does anyone see the irony in that? In closing, Money Magazine, August 2010, Best Places to Live in America. Number one, Eden Prairie, Minnesota. The best place to live in America, and oddly enough, curiously, ironically, the photograph right next to the number one designation for Eden Prairie shows the prairie bluff area. It's, I'm not anti-growth. I know that comes, that's part of life. The gentleman back here spoke earlier, said he was for property rights. I see his point, and property rights are very important. At the same time, the last thing Eden Prairie needs, if they ever want to be number one again in the United States, the last thing they need is for you folks to send forward an approval of this incredibly misplaced idea of yet another copycat development on a beautiful piece of land. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Deborah Ramos. Good evening.
My name is Deborah Ramos. I'm a southeast Minneapolis resident.
I'm sorry, would you pull it just a little closer to just make sure everyone can hear you?
I'm a southeast Minneapolis resident and an indigenous Latinx person. I've gathered water at the spring, for lack of its Dakota term, for four years, as do many Twin Cities community members. My comments are based on concerns for the spring, the creek, and the hill as a system of life that gives life. Upon learning very recently about the proposed elite housing development project, I question if those leading this project have heard of Line Three, the Tar sands pipeline proposed to build through Mississippi River, headwaters, wetlands, and Anishinaabe Treaty Territory. I also questioned if this elite housing development project leaders have heard of the Standing Rock community in South Dakota and the No Access Pipeline movement that demonstrated in 2016 to protect valuable cultural resources connected to healthy water and earth. This elitist housing development project affects much more than the quality of life of Eden Prairie residents. The project will impact, as mentioned many times earlier, will impact endangered native plant species, vulnerable groundwaterers, and forest cover needed to preserve the Riley Creek watershed. This project will contribute to climate change by encroaching upon a conservation area and sacred site within Dakota Nation territory that has offered respite and life in the form of water to all people long before the establishment of Eden Prairie. As mentioned earlier, today is World Water Day. I encourage all to tap into their consciousness and autonomous will in all endeavors that propose to benefit few while impacting the health and well-being of all. Further, no one has a right to own land and to do with it as they see fit. We live upon the earth that is a living entity. Our role and responsibility as humans on earth is to live in balance with the earth and in harmony with all those, all living beings on earth. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Mueller, Matthew Mueller, I can't tell if it's yes or no.
Yes.
Yeah, all right. Good evening.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
I can.
How about out in the peanut gallery? Great. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm, again, Matt Mueller. I'm a 29-year resident of Eden Prairie. I'm not an anti-progress, anti-development luddite. I don't live in the past. I don't wax nostalgic for nostalgia, but I did find a nice, I have two quotes that I wanted to share that kind of get to the topic at hand today. Quote, "The steep wooded valley walls surrounding the spring, the flow of nearby Riley Creek, and the old spring road all define the site of Frederick Miller Spring." That's a quote from City Manager Scott Neal. And he's not here now, but I think it's a very good quote. It's a beautiful place. Can we leave it alone? Maybe, I don't know. We've got a bunch of Eden Prairie residents here. You know how much you pay for property taxes. Do the math, times 50, that's one less hovercraft for the fire department or one less mobile device for the police department. But let's go to the Minnesota Department of Health, straight from their site about springs and wells. Springs are susceptible to contamination from surrounding land uses. Springs are usually formed in close proximity to the area where water seeps into the ground. This area is called a recharge area. Since the recharge area is close to the spring outlet, there's inadequate filtering of the water and removal of contaminants. Common sources of contamination are septic systems, barnyards, fertilizers, pesticides, chemicals, petroleum, and so forth. So we heard a lot about the spring not being impacted. I think all we really heard about was the access to the spring discharge not being impacted. Is there any evaluation of what the recharge area is and how much further impact we're going to have with this process? Because sooner or later, it will leak back into the system. Somebody, I think the third speaker this evening alluded to that, but let's think seriously about the recharge area. That's what I have to say. Clean water?
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is David Smith. I live on Flying Cloud Drive in Eden Prairie. And before I forget, I wanted to say that many of us are here, including Rebecca, the first speaker who was so eloquently spoken, had the slideshow, is not opposed to land owners' right to sell. We're opposing the rezoning. So that's an important clarification. And we have a question. Are there other sites available in Eden Prairie where one could develop and earn the tax revenue and protect the area in question? Seems like a win-win. So again, I live in Eden Prairie on Flying Cloud Drive. I've taught in the public schools for 10 years. I've taught at all five elementary schools. I no longer teach in Eden Prairie. I can live anywhere. I work remotely, I travel, but the reason I choose to live in Eden Prairie is for the quality of life, the green natural areas like those around the Frederick Miller Spring. And I'm concerned about losing those areas. I'm concerned about those 450 trees. I'm concerned about the wildlife. And I'd be very disappointed if it were to move forward and encouraging the planning commission and the city council to deny the rezoning request. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. I think it's Mitch Michelson.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, thanks for having me this evening. My name is Mitch Michelson. I've been a citizen of Eden Prairie my whole life, 39 years. I'm here to voice my support in three areas for this proposed project. Number one, the landowners' rights and the Standle family. Number two, the process in which you decision-makers use to make your very difficult decision. And number three, the city of Eden Prairie. The Standle family has been, have been wonderful neighbors, stewards of the land, wonderful citizens of the community for the last 50 years. As they turn the page, as they open a new chapter in their life, retirement, I strongly support their ability and their wish to sell their land that they've used, as I said, been stewards to and lived on the last 50 years. Number two, the process in which decision-makers use to make these difficult decisions, starting with the staff, you know, engineers, park and recreational managers, to mention a few, but also the various governmental agencies that you use, that you rely on to weigh in, comment, give you reports, help you make these difficult decisions in order to do what's, in my opinion, best for the progress of our city and our community. And number three, the city of Eden Prairie, I support the guidance that they approved a number of years ago to develop this area, to continue to not only invest in infrastructure and planning, but to use this area as future development for our city. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I think it's Aaron Peterson? Sophia? Sophia?
No, we switched places.
Okay.
Yeah, so, unpage from earlier.
I'm sorry, what's your page?
Unpage, Sophia, nice, switched places.
Oh, gotcha.
I wanted to make sure she went. Okay, can everybody back there hear me? Yeah, okay, great. So I just wanted to start off saying I didn't hear this at the top of the meeting, just making sure that the space knows that we are on Dakota land that was taken by force and coercion. I am of Scandinavian and Celtic heritage, as I imagine many people in this area are. And I just wanted to share some observations about what I heard and what I read on this worksheet tonight. Okay, so, it says that a environment... Okay, so it says that a environment, environmental assessment worksheet was done in 2007 about a road extension. So that's not the housing development that is being talked about. And I also found that the, an EWA, so the environmental assessment worksheet, is used to figure out if there's more thorough environmental impact statements that need to be done. So according to that, it seems pretty clear that a road is really different from a housing development, and I don't think that those are comparable. The language in this packet that was handed out says that, according to the road extension, it's not likely that it'll impact the Frederick Miller Spring, but I don't think that, that doesn't make me feel good. And it's not a promise. And I heard this, that, I think, I can't remember which gray suit guy was the guy that wants to build this, but he said that it was, there would be completely no impact, but it doesn't even say that in the worksheet. So I just want everyone to know that that was a lie. And then Matt Born said that it should not have any impact, but that's not that it won't have any impact on the spring. And then that guy, Rod Rue, the city engineer, mentioned that there were BPMs and little lakes, and he used the word rigorous, but I didn't feel like he actually put forth any, any real steps for how they were going to protect it. He just kind of talked around it. And I just want to leave with the question that if the spring and the wildlife are affected, who's going to be accountable for this? Because I don't see any language, and I haven't heard anyone say that there is for sure, based on evidence, going to be no effect to the spring. And I also want to ask, what are we leaving for our children? That's all.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Anderson, are you still here?
I don't see anybody.
Good evening.
Good evening. I just found out about this last night. It was my first time visiting the spring. I live in Chaska. I'm a new resident. I visited the spring because I found out that our city water that's piped into our houses is undrinkable, and I don't even give it to my animals. I am here in person, pushing aside significant career and livelihood risk. My parents own the retaining wall company that will be building the retaining walls at the proposed housing development. We are a preferred contractor of Pulte, and we have been building retaining walls for Pulte since before they acquired Centex Homes in 2008, dating back to 2000 when I was 11 years old. I build these massive retaining walls and have done so my entire life. I joke with people that I never grew up, my sandbox just got bigger, and the toys I used to build these structures got a lot more expensive. Far and away, the biggest concern regarding the retaining walls I build is the handling of water flowing over or through them. It has always been a point of contention with Pulte, and more importantly, neglect regarding the handling of this runoff. This is based on my previous work done with Pulte. For me, a lot of this seems like political theater. I know how this machine works. I'm not ignorant of it. I participate in it, and I care a lot about the environment. My only wish is that when this development does go through is that Pulte will make a more serious and concise effort to deal with this runoff water, not only in this development, but all future developments. And if you have any questions regarding these retaining walls, I would gladly answer them. And then a favorite quote of mine, which is relevant more and more every day, is that "Our ability to measure has exceeded our ability to understand." Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I think that is the list, and now we're on to the virtual speakers.
If they're on mute, Chair, they might have to unmute themselves.
Do you want to, do you want to just unmute? Everyone just?
I can't unmute them. They have to unmute themselves.
All right, Roberto Gonzalez, you have to unmute if you're on, and you might be muted. Melissa Lewis? Why don't I just go with, I'll look at the last couple digits of phone numbers I see. How about that? Phone number ending 760. Phone number.
Mitchell Moss.
Mitchell Michelson?
Mitch Moss.
Okay. Oh, Mitch Moss, okay.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. I'm sorry to interrupt you. First off, I'd like to go on record saying that, sorry, getting a little flattered. I'd like to go on record in opposition of redoing the set on the ground of potential long-term negative effects on the spring and the surrounding nature. I don't need to reiterate a lot of the good things that have already been said. Thank you so much for everybody who has presented before me here in support of my position here. I have a couple of questions. Are there any provisions or leverage in place in this proposal to address any unforeseen or unintended detrimental effects upon the spring should something happen? Provisions of actionable accountability? And is there anything here the community could do to compensate the city to offset the potential loss of tax revenue in the event that this redoing is not approved? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moss. See, next, phone number ending 642. Good evening. Would you mind stating your name for us, please?
I'm Jessica Schultz.
Okay, great. Thanks, Jessica.
I'm wondering what you have proposed to eliminate this exfil runoff from the developmental
I'm sorry.
You have a contract with the insulation to prevent pesticides and herbicides usage of the residents on Iran and other care they may provide to prevent any mon care. I'm getting a lot of feedback here. It's not going quite a bit.
Yeah, we're having a little trouble hearing you.
So I'm wondering if you will propose something to the residents who build there or supply the property or follow where you want to go. I'm wondering if you will build a proposal to the residents there that will conduct against pesticide and herbicide on Iran that they take care of.
Is there any other questions or anything like us to discuss?
I just think it's very important that the person who owns five quarter-mile of farmland to know that they will not be able to use pesticides and herbicides on Iran that will potentially run off into the spring, others left a quarter-mile away from them.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. Mr. Johnson, you're on mute if you're trying to speak. Leaving, okay. Let's see, phone number ending in 925? Yes, hello, good evening. Hello. Would you mind stating your name for the record and, please?
Hello, this is Shuri Berman, and I've been a resident within five miles of Frederick Miller Spring since 1991. I have just found out about this. I feel extremely concerned, as have the rest of our neighbors in front there, that this didn't get more notice to the people that find this place to be sacred, the water sacred. I just, I don't want to reiterate all the amazing points that have been brought up regarding the threatened species, the decaying habitat, you know, sacred land, traffic safety issues. Instead, I'd like to bring up a couple issues and, or a couple questions. I am wondering about any cash compensation that people would receive there for this development, and will the city receive any cash compensation for that that is not tax-based? You know, I think it's, it's important to note that this development is being developed within 20 miles of 20 golf courses. I just am so passionate about this land and the water, the people there, that I think this is the passing seven, and that we are forgetting the sacredness of the areas in the spring there, which means it's a holy place, whereas the planet, you know, life-giving I, sorry, I'm a little passionate, because this is four years of history and I'm concerned for the water, but I just want to thank everybody there, friends and family that showed up. Teresa, thank you for standing there for two days, and I urge you, Chairman, and, you know, Eden Prairie Commissioners, to please say no to this proposed development. You know, a city manager for Eden Prairie once said in one of his blogs, and it was Scott Neal who once wrote, "The steep wooded valley walls surrounding Frederick Miller The steep wooded valley walls surrounding the spring. To define the site. Sorry. I'm in that path, and I feel the people there, you know, I urge the city to consider the residents, the water, and the sacredness of the land, and say no to this proposed We are already in a degraded state there. Riley Creek is so devastated. I've watched the watershed destroy that creek area. Anybody that knows Frederick Miller Spring knows that we get driven into the rain, and we've got a waterfall. There's not be coming down that hill, and that creek floods, and it rushes over the edge there. And I just cannot see that building 50 houses on 28 acres will not significantly impact continued deterioration of Riley Creek. And to say that because it is on the east side, development is on the east side and not the west side, will not impact that spring water, concerns me. So one, the city says that they do not control or are not responsible for the quality of that water. My question on that is, will you, if you approved this development, then be more concerned about the quality of the water and any runoff? I also just want to make mention that that walking trail that you guys had talked about at the beginning as an asset to that development, that walking trail has been deteriorated for two years. It has been blocked off by fences. It has been unsafe for walking for anybody in that area. We have not been able to walk up that hill or use that walking path for a very long time, because the hill cannot handle the watershed currently. So, thank you. I know I'm kind of all over the place. I'm out of state, very passionate, and I hope that you see how passionate we all are about this sacred land, this sacred water, and I just want to thank you for hearing us. I know you knew it was not going to be easy, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Julie, is there just one page of attendees virtually? Can you tell?
Mr. Chair, yes, just one page of the virtual.
Okay, so I think I got everyone. I just want to make sure everyone that wanted to speak has a chance. Sir, would you like to come up? State your name, if you would, please.
My name's Justin DeAngelo. I'm a Chaska resident. I'll be quick. I heard a lot of talk about the rigors and best management practices. I want to know, are these things going to be made public? The way I see it, we've got 1,037 and counting that if we need to get independent studies done to see what's going to happen to the wildlife and, and the spring, we can do that, and we will do that. The other half of it is, it's a proposal. So there's nothing that I can say that hasn't already been said by all these wonderful people tonight, but the way I see it, so Eden Prairie has this signage everywhere. We got a bird, and we got wildlife, we got plant life underneath it. It's on every one of your placards here. I think if this goes through, we need to get rid of all of that. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, sir, just a second. Good evening, if you wouldn't mind stating your name for the record, please.
My name is Scott Adaman. I'm probably a unique speaker here tonight. First of all, I wasn't even planning on speaking. I've spoken in front of hundreds of people, but not without rehearsing for many hours. So I'm a little nervous, I'm a little worried I'm not going to sleep well tonight after speaking. But as I said, I'm a unique speaker here tonight, and I am so impressed with everybody else that has spoken and who's showed up here, because they have a whole different reason than why I'm here. I live on 10002 Indigo Drive. It's a very expensive home. I bought that home after I've lived in Eden Prairie for 31 years. My wife has lived here for 34 years. This was the spot she wanted to live. She's lived here all her life. We sold the home in Belle Oaks that went through a similar situation off of River View Drive many, many, many years ago, when that was developed and developed and developed. And all of the woods and all of the bluffs and everything are gone over there. I want to know if anybody, is there somebody here named Beth Krebs?
Julie, would you like to?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Beth Novak-Krebs is a senior planner on our staff. She's not in attendance this evening.
The only reason why I brought up her name is she was a recipient of a letter written by six of our homes. I don't know if you can pull up the map. 1002 is directly impacted, so is 1001's, 1000, 1004, 1005, 1006. We are that bluff. If you don't mind, let me take a look. This is my picture off my back deck, and you can pass my phone around if you'd like. That's the trees we're talking about, fellows and women. It's not just trees. The home I grew up in just recently, last weekend, went up for sale. That home's 51 years old. I'm glad I learned what a heritage tree is. There's trees on that lot. My father planted with me and my sister. I can't believe how big they are 51 years later. The trees I'm showing you there, they're that age. I didn't know they were heritage trees. I agree that there's landowner rights. That property is worth what it's zoned at. It's zoned as a rural property. It's zoned as a rural property. I'd love for you to take my, audio make it into a Rolls-Royce, if you could do that too for me. Property owners' rights don't need to impact my rights and my quality of life. That's my quality of life I just purchased not that long ago. That property was zoned rural. For decades, people have been trying to develop on that property. Maybe perhaps some of you or your predecessors denied them, one after another, after another, after another. I did my research before I bought that home. I also find it interesting that, if you would have looked out there at the beginning of this meeting, that's how many of us neighbors showed up when the last developer was here last year, for a community meeting, prior to COVID, prior to Zoom, prior to the world we live in today. To say there was fifteen people from the community that showed up at that meeting, I, I believe that number, but that number was, that was very non-publicized, it was word of mouth, and who needs another Zoom meeting? Not me. I bought Zoom seventeen hours a day now. I don't like it anymore. I didn't go to that meeting. I can't believe one year later, we're back here with the exact same proposal, less nine houses. That view you see right there, I get to look at shingles, chimneys, and siding from here on out. The woman that first spoke here, man, I'm impressed with how much she cares about that. I, I don't come from her world, but I was prepared to get up here and tell you on that one slide of all of the animals that I watch out our back door. And she's missing a few. And she's missing a few species. That's gone. I hope my tax, my tax goes down too, because my house is going to drop, and I'm going to probably lose one-fifth of my retirement money because of this development. I'm not the only one, but you can see, there's nobody here with me this, because nobody knows about it. They know about it through an email from an association that doesn't say, "Warning, this is what this is about." They delete it. All of our houses are going to be worth seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars less because that's what we paid a premium for, for that view. And that view's gone now, if you approve this, this project. The landowner doesn't have a right to make a profit of what he wishes because he needs it zoned differently. And they need to fit sixty houses on it so they can make a profit. That's a rural piece of land right now, and it has been for a long time, since I lived in Eden Prairie and way beyond that. It's just a tax grab, and it's going to be dominoes, because you see, we live in some of the most expensive houses on that bluff. But right across the streets, my neighbor whose house bought, because he bought next to an expensive home, the guy behind him, the guy behind him. It's, the, the tax benefit is going to be erased with the loss of value in the whole neighborhood. Like I said, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I wasn't planning on talking tonight. I would have been a lot more prepared with some data and some facts for you, but that's how I feel about it. And I know that after our last time around, a year ago, the house on my right side and the house on my left side, both went home and put them up for sale because they feared this was going to happen, and I didn't believe it. And here we are, one year later, and you're trying to push it through again. I hope he's wrong about political theater. I too was involved in some commercial real estate, some development of some office buildings, and I know the phone calls that go on behind the scenes. I've been part of them. I hope that's not what we have here today. Thank you, and I mean that with respect. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Good evening. If you would say your name for the record, please.
I'm Rachel Ozdenoch. I am a Chen Hassan resident, but I live in Riley Creek, um, by Lake Susan in that district. I wasn't prepared to speak tonight, but I'm very passionate, and I just found out about this meeting as we were stopped to get water today. I've been getting water there, um, at the spring since my dad has been taking me since I was young, and now we take my son there, and it's the only water he'll drink. Um, I'm a nurse, and I feel the waters, I'm Chen Hassan, but it's not safe for us to drink with all the addends they put in it, chlorine, fluoride, they're not healthy. I'm a heart nurse, they're not healthy for your heart. Um, and I can't believe that for fifty houses, you're willing to take a half a, any chance that to, to make that water contaminated or undrinkable. It's, um, it just seems like the risk is too great, then the unknowns are too much to, to take that risk for fifty houses. Um, and the beauty, it's just unfathomable that you would consider that. Um, and, um, I just think the COVID, we've shut down the whole world for maybe a ha- a point five percent chance that some of us might die, and now we, a half a percent chance that that water's contaminated, we're just going to let it happen. It's just, I just feel it's, that you guys have to really consider nature and what this community is all about. And, uh, I guess that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, was, yes. Good evening. Would you say your name for the record, please?
I will. My name is Jeff Baroviak, and thank you for hearing me. I wasn't planning on speaking today, and I'm very, very nervous. The, uh, the first thing I'd like to address is the environmental assessment that's been done by your department, and I'd like to take a moment to call it out. I don't think it's accurate. The, uh, my degree is in biology from Carleton College. Uh, I became an environmental activist in nineteen ninety, and I've been working on that all this time. And I have heard no discussion about the mycelial networks. I've known, heard no discussion about rare or endangered insects that might be in this space. You need to recognize that the east side of the valley that is all full of trees is part of the ecosystem that's on the other side of the road as well, and that's the ecosystem that's protecting the aquifer primarily, the recharge system for it. The animals, plants, mycelial networks, all go back and forth across that space. And so if you do damage to one side of this, we've seen this in the mountains out in Colorado and elsewhere, if you do damage to one side of a valley, you are going to have a profound impact on the other side of that valley because the plants don't know the difference. The mycelia don't know the difference. They go back and forth across it. On top of the bluff is rural. It's a Christmas tree farm that's old, right? And so you have a wilderness area, we'll call that the treat area on the side of the valley, that's adjacent to a rural area, Christmas tree farm. And hopefully, they haven't loaded that with pesticides because we know as water goes downhill there, everything that's on top of that bluff is going to go downhill. If you're putting houses, it'll be the runoff from the asphalt on the shingles, the runoff from the paint when they paint their houses, stuff coming off the roads. It's going to be a constant flow going downhill, damaging that. So when you go and look now, even in your own community here, there are a lot of ticky-tacky houses, housing units that have been all built right next to each other. And when you see you have a wilderness area right next to a housing unit, that wilderness area is profoundly disturbed, right? And more so over time. So if you take away, uh, Christmas tree farm rural area that's next to a wilderness area, that wilderness area is going to be damaged. There's no doubt about it, right? I think you all need to be aware of this. It's a very, very important issue here. I think what needs to be done with this property, and I honor and respect the, the elders who occupied and have protected that land for so long, and I think we need to find a way that they can buy out of that property and be able to move forward with their retirement to the next phase of their lives, taking care of their children, grandchildren. I bless them as much as I can. I think we need to find a way that we can create a, uh, maintain the trees and, and land that are up there and have a way to augment that with some sort of organic farming capacity, um, someone that's promising not to use any pesticides and whatnot, someone that's going to build up the plant base that's right there. We're in the day and age, this is moving a little bit away from the environmental impact right there, but we're in a, in a, in a day and age where we are imminently concerned about the CO2 rise on this planet, right? And so when you talk about an environmental impact statement, uh, on this, uh, this particular development, you might talk about, well, what kind of runoff is going to affect downstream? But I want to just talk about the carbon dioxide emissions that we're talking about. Right now, you have a carbon sink on top of this with all its rich diversity and ecosystem up there. You have a carbon sink that is soaking up tons of carbon dioxide out of the air every single minute. It's better than farmland because it's already photosynthesizing. The farmland's not. That'll start happening in a couple of months. What's on the other side of your equation, your environmental impact statement? You're going to put fifty CO2 pollution machines up there. Every single one of those houses is going to be dumping CO2 to heat itself. It's going to be dumping CO2 in the atmosphere just to keep itself cool in the winter, right? These aren't, these aren't environmental earthship type houses where people are really thinking through their environmental impact. In fact, I haven't seen anything in the developers' plan that they're going to make this an environmentally sustainable development, and this is what we need. So you're weighing a decision here now of being part of the solution for all the children that are screaming for it. The next generation is screaming for it right now, where you can maintain that, protect the environment, protect the plants, and keep sucking out CO2, or you can have fifty new pollution belching structures on your property. And this is a thing that you need to think about, please. Another issue I want you to think about is the, um, the safety of your own drinking water compared to the safety of the spring water. I've been only drinking the spring water for a year now, and, uh, it was after reading a research report that came out of Japan where, uh, chemists and biologists went to look at swimming pools and determined if swimming pools had carcinogens therein. And they found a lot, high levels, and they're like, where is this coming from? Took them a long time to figure it out, and they figured out it's, it's not the sunscreen on people's bodies, it's not the chlorine that we've bubbled into our waters to kill the bacteria, it's the back, the chlorine interacting with the sunscreen that causes the carcinogens. We know this occurs in our drinking system even as well. When you're bubbling the chlorine into it, it's going into your body, and it's interacting with your cells, molecules, and it's causing problems in us. I've talked with this, with a lot of pharmacists because they're in the know, and every pharmacist I meet says, "I do not drink water with chlorine." They mentioned fluoride too, but I'm just talking about the chlorine now. They do not drink it with, with chlorine in it. They use a reverse osmosis filter into their house. Now, a lot of the people here will also tell you that if you do reverse osmosis filtration on your water, you're pulling all the minerals on, out of it. So when you drink that, it's pulling minerals out of you as well. The people that are going to this spring, I do quite believe are the wisest people around. They know what good water is, and they know the danger of putting chlorine into the water that we drink. I'd like you to please think about that. The final thing I'd like to touch on is the importance of activism around protecting water. Water's already been identified as the major issue of the future, fresh drinking, clean water. The people that are working to stop the pipelines up in northern Minnesota, all the indigenous people are fighting to protect the water up there, and these are people who do not religiously believe in land ownership. And that's something for you all to think about when you want to protect someone's rights to develop on a piece of property. We all recognize there should be a separation of church and state, and the law that says that says, "The government shall pass no law that gives preference to one religion over another." The Abrahamic religions all believe in land ownership, but all the Native American religions say that you cannot own land. You are part of the land. You pass through the land during the time you're here. And you better believe me that that spring has been sacred and holy to every indigenous person passing through long before our ancestors stole it from them. And you better believe that all those ancestors of the Indians watching going on now are praying this development does not take place. And this is your place and your time now to make that decision. And don't think about seven generations back. Think about seven generations in the future. Because in seven generations in the future, will someone be able to walk up that bluff and walk along there and see how beautiful and incredible it is? Another thing for you to think about, please, is the level of activism around this, and it's something that I don't think has entered into the equation yet, but, um, when I was in South Minneapolis, when they threatened Coldwater Springs, you see how many people came out on short notice and how passionate they are. For the Coldwater Springs in South Minneapolis, when they wanted to reroute the Highway Fifty-Five so it was going to damage Coldwater Springs, in the end, the city council changed their plan so that it would not affect the spring in any way, shape, or form. But when it was announced that it was going to be there, there was an encampment of people camping out on the land, sitting up in the trees, protecting it. It went on for six months. They had to cut people out of the trees with fire department going up there and cutting them down. People feel so passionately about water, it's sacred, and please do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Good evening. If you, if you would state your name for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Madhura Patel. Can everyone hear clearly?
No.
Yeah.
I am a resident of Shakopee. I have been coming to the spring last five years. There's an interesting story how I got introduced to the spring. One time, my mom was visiting from India, and one of the healing places mentioned that she should get more.
I'm sorry, would you mind just pulling your microphone just a little closer, I think?
Let's see. Does this work?
Maybe just a little more if you could. Oh, make sure everyone can hear and hear you.
Hi.
That's better, thank you.
Okay. So, um, I am from Indian descent, and, uh, I learned of the spring five years ago. There's an interesting story how I learned about it. It was when my mom was visiting from India, and one of the healing places here mentioned that we should try giving her more of natural water to see if it helps, um, address some of her ailments, and that's how I started coming to the spring. For the last two years, I have been gathering rainwater, kind of rainwater harvesting to use for my gardening, uh, for my plants, but it was really a good, good to know that we have the spring as a natural source of water too. And I had just curiously looked up and found that the other natural water spring was up in St. Paul, so I was counting my lucky stars that you have something nearby that you can access. So today, no, not, although not directly impacted, I feel that we should consider the long-term impact because I was reading some articles like, uh, in New York where they said, because there is so much urban development, um, the land cannot absorb the rainfall, and you see a lot of flooding issues. So that is one thing. The other thing is, being into gardening, I have noticed, um, actually, give me, let me give a backstory. I was at the Friends Plant Sale that is held on Mother's Day at our grandstand in Minneapolis, and one of the master gardeners had recommended that I be attentive to the fact that I don't let a lot of the fertilizer run off into the soil because it causes the algae bloom. And we know that how far it reaches, and it's really hard to control. Even when I do gardening, I have to be very watchful about it, and there are still times that, you know, it ends up causing some algae. So here also, I feel that e- even if we try to do our best, there will be mishaps, and, um, what can we do to reduce the contamination that will reach the springs? The other concern or the other aspect I want to consider is, I've always rationalized about whatever I want to do, do I really need it? Because I come from a culture that says that, take minimum or only that you need from nature and not be greedy about it. So, you know, I want people to think because taking things apart might be easier, but putting all those pieces of the puzzle together would be really difficult. So the time to think or speak up is right now, and that's why I thought I, let me take this opportunity to speak my mind. And, um, as a person who is genetically vulnerable, I have to think twice about what chemicals I let come close to me. So that is another angle I think everybody should take into account, uh, going forward. That's all I had to say. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Good evening. If you would say your name for the record, please.
Yeah, my name is Ava Dufreen. I lived in Eden Prairie pretty much my whole life. Um, I was born in Minneapolis. I grew up here. I grew up here. I live in Bloomington now. But what I really liked about this city is I would go on walks all the time and just, there's a lot of cool nature here. And as I get older, I feel like here and everywhere, just, nature is just getting lessened. And I just think that if we have an opportunity to preserve something, that we should. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Good evening.
My name is David Nadi. I drive an hour and a half away to get this wonderful spring water. Before, I tried all kinds of different water, alkaline, reverse osmosis, tap water I've been drinking all my life. And I come here an hour and a half, I get about six half-gallon jugs of water every time I come here. And I share with my friends, my family, uh, my little brothers, who, two of them are autistic, and, uh, I can't, I can't just tell them that your spring water's gone now because of a development field that decided to take place, right? That's not gonna happen. It changed their life drinking this water, quite literally. They're able to detoxify better, they're able to get rid of more parasites, heavy metals, you know? Their brains are able to function better. One of them's able to academically perform much better than they were able to. And I don't think it's a coincidence that after I've been feeding them this water, that things started to change for them. They wanna change their diet, they start eating steamed cooked vegetables, more just, more digestible for them, their bodies are too yen, it's too toxified, they can't detox as well off of this water. It's a fact. Um, I try to give them alkaline water. People say that was the thing, that's false. This, this water is the real deal. Tried many different remedies for them. And I'm basically a one-man army for my brothers, parents don't know what to do. It's a new time we live in. They didn't have autism growing up, they didn't have relatives or friends with autism growing, growing up. There's a reason for that. There's much more chemicals and metals in the environment and in our mothers' rooms, right? So when a child is born, they're, they're toxic, you know, more than any time in history, really. And also, you know, sometimes vaccines can trigger reactions, sometimes, sometimes it works out, you know? And, uh, I think it's just insane to take down such precious, precious source of water that has helped so many people that people drive or have, will be happy to drive about two hours to come out here, see this beautiful land, and you meet beautiful people in this community. It's changed my life, it's changed lives that are connected to me. And I think it's just, we'd, we'd be living in a sane asylum if we just decided this was okay, you know? Without really knowing the full consequences of what you could be doing. And, um, yeah, I want you guys to consider it, like, this has changed their lives. I might not even have a, I might not even have a job this week, I mean, and I don't care, I would do it over again, right? My supervisor's calling me the whole time as I was sitting out there. But I'm way more concerned about this water than I am to keep my job. You know, it's, it's a blessing that this water's been free, that I've been able to change lives with it. I'm starting to, start to see life proliferate very slowly but surely in my brothers and sisters. And, um, this water has done a lot more than you think it has. And I wanna thank you for listening, I wanna thank you for giving me the opportunity to come up here and speak to a few gentlemen and women this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening.
My name is John Richardson. Um, I'm a builder, contractor, and I do these kinds of things, not on this level. But this is something that I do do, and I do understand all the different facets that are a part of it, as far as developing and building homes, et cetera. I feel quite strongly about a lot of what has been said tonight. It's clear as a bell how important this particular area is and the impacts that it can have. And it's, uh, it's hard to swallow the idea that it's almost like it's being passed over, the environmental impact has not been fleshed out nearly as well as it should be. The ideas that adding all of these homes to the area will help the area is clear. You know, I mean, it's more community, you know, more traffic, more people, more members of, well, citizens of Eden Prairie. I believe that's a good thing. I don't think this particular situation really makes a lot of sense to have it happen right there. The points that have been made by so many people before me are really vibrant in their impact and their, the meaning that will come out of it. It's, it's foolish to not, to just look aside of how will it impact the watershed. The watershed affects so much. This is already a, a very sensitive area, and it needs to be thought of that way. Now, I also believe that the people who are wanting to sell the area, the landowners, they certainly should be able to do what they want to with the land and sell it to whomever they choose. However, rezoning it, the way it's zoned right now, it protects this watershed, which is a vibrant part of Eden Prairie and Minnesota. And the fact that it's zoned rural right now makes all the sense in the world. Changing the zoning so that somebody who buys the property can do something to it that will, there's no question, impact the ecology is just beyond words. It's like, how is it even a consideration? I don't understand. Again, I'm in favor of building good quality homes and building community. I do it all the time, I do it for my job, I enjoy it. In this instance, it does not make sense. So I hope to see it stay the way it's zoned in an effort to protect the numerous situations involved. And that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else? Thank you for your comments this evening. Uh, I entertain a motion to close the public hearing and continue the discussion about some of these items.
Move to close the public hearing.
Motion for Commissioner Kirk to have a second.
Second.
Second for Commissioner Higgins. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, public hearing's closed. All right, uh, trying to categorize there, there's a lot there, so. Is there anything that someone would like to start out talking about? Clearly, we heard the, the watershed issues and then nature impact. Mr. Chairman.
Is there a chance I could just make a, a general statement before more people leave?
Absolutely, yeah. Go ahead. Commissioner Kirk.
It's really not on the, uh, on the project. But first off, there's, there's an assumption that people make, um, when they come to planning commission meetings who haven't been here before, and that is that we work for the city. We're not, we're all volunteers. All the planning commissioners are volunteer, and we do this because it's our way to give service back to the community. Also, a lot of people think we make these decisions. We don't. We advise the city council. So there's a lot of discussions that go on here that are very healthy discussions, and there's disagreements that go on, and they're very healthy because it airs things for our city council who ultimately, our elected officials, have the final vote. So this is a really healthy environment, and we're tickled to see all the people here and talking about things whether we completely agree with them or not. And obviously, that varies by individual. And lastly, somebody talked about Eden Prairie character, and what I'd like to suggest is, you think about, if you wanna impact Eden Prairie character, volunteer and get on a commission, whether it be planning, whether it be diversity, whether it be heritage preservation or whatever. But a, a lot of you are very active people and very passionate people. Channel that into something that helps Eden Prairie be a better place.
Thank you, Commissioner Kirk. Commissioner Mitty.
I'll start off with, uh, I'll just try to go quickly through my comments and hopefully some of them address some of the, some of the questions and comments, uh, from the public. I, um, I'm a user and advocate of the spring. I have a jug of spring water in my fridge right now. I, I certainly do not want to and would never want to allow a proposal that would impact the spring. Um, I did receive and read the EAW that's been referenced a number of times, and just so everyone's clear, the EAW was a study that was done, um, with regard to various potential road extensions to the west of Spring Road. That EAW then identified that the, the source of Miller Spring groundwater is to the west and northwest of the spring, which is to the, on the west side of Spring Road but is, is piped to the east. So, um, and, and then barring any large earthquake that's happened, the, the groundwater flow has, has not changed, even though it's 14 years old. Uh, that kinda stuff doesn't change. So, um, again, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to look toward, you know, the engineers, the environmental specialists, where these reports are coming from, um, and really trying to make decisions based off of fact. Another thing I'd like to point out for those, um, the, the property's currently zoned rural. Rural zoning allows, um, some very low-density housing. It also allows agriculture uses. So by right, the property owner can have a tree farm, they can also have a corn farm, they could make this a vegetable farm. Think in terms of fertilizer runoff and all of those concerns, we have those concerns in any event. Um, and I think they're real, and I, I think the idea is we want this proposal to, to address those concerns. Um, and again, this proposal does have stormwater drainage to, to areas of the site that filter and retain that stormwater and don't allow it to just go straight into Riley Creek. Um, another allowed use in the rural zoning are commercial stables. Um, it would be a beautiful property for horse stables. And I'm sure the neighbors would love the smell of manure, the runoff from the manure, all of those things. Again, you know, it's, I understand that some people want it to remain rural, but I think there are certainly worse uses, uh, that are allowed by right, right now, that could go on the site than what we're seeing here today. Um, I also believe that this proposal is, is an improvement from the last proposal we received from Gagne and that we did approve. Um, and right now, I am not seeing any, I, I'm, I am seeing sufficient evidence that suggests that this proposal will not affect the spring, which I think's very important. Riley Creek, which is, you know, technically downhill, again, I think with that, it's, it's a balance of whatever uses on this site, there's gonna be runoff. So the question is, how is that being treated and mitigated? I think that this development is mitigating it appropriately, um, and I think that there's far worse uses allowed by right that could impact that worse. So, um, from that perspective, I'm not seeing, you know, a huge reason to, uh, to be against this proposal. Um, and so kind of in conclusion, you know, again, trying to, our, our, our job here, the planning commission, is, is to review this proposal, and, uh, based on all of the reports and the evidence and the engineered drawings and the civil work, you know, I'm seeing that this doesn't impact the spring and is taking all required measurements that we require to, uh, protect the, the creek and the stormwater systems and all the government agencies that review this. So therefore, you know, I feel like as my job as planning commissioner, there's no reason that I'm seen to deny this application. I think the city's, uh, recommendation to approve it is consistent with what we've done in other projects. So if there are those that think that we should deny it, I, you know, my, my thought, which is open for discussion here, I'm curious to hear others' thoughts, is, you know, it seems like this would be making an exception compared to others, but, um, that's sort of, those are my initial thoughts and comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Mitty.
Commissioner DeSantis. Yes. Um, I think incredibly impressed passion and iron state of the public in their comment. First of all, we talked about affordable housing, the Eden Prairie 24-year plan, they did clear that one of the city's priorities was creating more affordable housing. When you are projecting homes in the upper six hundreds, upper eight hundreds, that is far and away removed from affordability for the vast majority of people. I am impressed with how the community came together. I think what the community did in its collective comments spoke to the spiritual and mental wellbeing and the physical wellbeing of the community and their concerns that there's no guarantee that the watershed could be sullied by the development. I cannot support this development or rezoning plan in its present form in good conscience. I do not feel there's been sufficient study of the biodiversity, the impact on fragile ecosystem. My regard for the land, I bought along the road, I have studied that land. I am concerned about the aesthetic as well as the long-term impact. As many people traverse that road, Spring Road, and seeing trees clear cut, it damages the psyche. So I am on the record as opposing this development plan in its present form.
Thank you, Commissioner DeSantis. Commissioner Gooding. You're on mute, Commissioner Gooding.
Sorry about that. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. Um, you know, this is a, a very difficult piece of land for development. The tachyphety is poor. Um, early development, you have 59 houses, this one has 50, I'm cramming in the corner because of other conditions on the land. I don't like the extensive use of, of, uh, walls throughout. I think that is a long-term headache for homeowners. You know, that's a choice they make when they buy it, I'm not sure it's under our wing, but I don't particularly like that. Um, I think that a tremendous amount of late streets are being lost and we shouldn't make that likely. You know, they, there should be ways to develop, given where they're at, that they could stage some of that. The point the preservers made about the sidelines, I was over there one day, I drove that day. Um, I think they have some validity on the sidelines, the road for the, so to go. Um, I was being attentive to that when I was there. I have not had a chance to look at the, the EAW. I know Commissioner did. Um, and, um, I'm so concerned of that, you know, they looked at, they determined the border, again, they, the border fee for the spring is on the west and the west-north. But they really didn't look at where this, from this site goes. They looked at, you know, how does the water filter through the dirt that's gonna be moved on this land and will that impact the ground earth? And given this, given the significance of the spring, I think it might would be worthwhile to, to answer that question, making the assumption. think, answer that question, making the assumption that it won't change when they move a lot of dirt from the top and the water enters the soil a little different. It is still a pressure is valid. So I would just like to approve this as it stands today for a lot of different reasons.
Could you clarify that, Commissioner Gooding? You would not vote to?
I would not vote to support it for a lot of different reasons as it stands today, of which I highlighted earlier.
Thank you, Commissioner Gooding. Commissioner Marcos?
I did review last year's development meeting where the Gagne development was proposed, and in preparation for tonight, was surprised actually by tonight's reaction from our community and also really impressed by how many people came up tonight. I do think that Pulte has looked at the site as being many considerations of the surrounding environment, but I just don't, you know, that there hasn't been enough environmental investigation done to feel good about developing that site. I do agree with Commissioner Mitty that a rural zoning comes with its own challenges for ground below that we can't control. However, I think that making the change right now to the proposed development is not supported by the evidence that we've been given. And while I love the idea of supporting, you know, the inspired 240 plan that the city worked so hard to put together, I just think that we need to do our work to understand what this really could be doing to the environment before we approve it.
Thank you, Commissioner Marcos. Mr. Higgins?
I have been sitting here mulling over so many of the thoughts and the real commitment of people here in Eden Prairie who are here this evening and others who were not, who enjoy the area that the spring and the creek are part of, not just the charm, but the essential quality of it. On the other hand, the other thing that is really making, I think, the key difference for me is that absent something that is what I think a very, very careful ability to look at the land and to parcel out some areas to be taken back, in other words, the developer is saying there are several parts of that land that they could have used for the whole, to add more homes or do whatever, but they are saying they have some of the outlaw areas that they realize may be valuable to the city for the preservation of what's there. Water, the spring, the surrounding area, what it's like. Now, there are certainly things that I was not aware of. I haven't been up on the bluff for a while, up on the trail, and I know it has had its share of wear and tear. So there's always things that we aren't keeping track of because they don't come here to the Planning Commission. I'm not going to take myself off the hook for that, but I, you know, I'm glad to hear from my fellow residents of things that I'm now a little uncomfortable about, and that includes what we were just all talking about. But I really think that this development needs to move forward, and I am going to support it. I think it is respectful of a lot of the things that have been learned through the process of trying to get something done. And I just want to make one other point, and it's not to fault anyone, but the area just to the east and the north of that area is a huge, the biggest housing development, I think, as a one big project that was ever done at Eden Prairie. And I happen to live just a few blocks from there, on a smaller portion of that same development. And, you know, I think about that a lot. It's even at a higher elevation than the land we're talking about tonight, and it's been up there for 20-some years now. And I think it's a great place, but, and it is the place that we are going to need to find a way to live with the development over there because there is a connection to that, to the land that they were talking about, June Grass Lane. My understanding of that circumstance is sort of biased, or not biased, it probably is biased, but it's biased, I think, for good reason. If you have all these homes, you're going to need to have the emergency and fire protection and police protection on a basis that works. And it may turn out to be that the Henepin Village is going to need to make some accommodation to this area. So, just, it's sort of a roundabout way of saying, I'm learning. I've been on the commission for a while, so it's not as if I haven't heard these things before, but not in the same context as this evening. But I'm going to support moving forward to the city council with this proposal.
Thanks, Commissioner Higgins.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Commissioner Farr. Thank you. I too am a long-term resident of Eden Prairie. I've been here for 40 years. I go to the spring at least once a week. I've probably met some of you people out there, talking to all the great people that show up at the spring. I drink it at work and I drink it at home every day. And I may not be the healthiest person in the room, but I think it attributes to some of that health. And so I know that some of the features that the water has, some people say, help their health. I believe it. And it's a great source of pride for our city and the surrounding area, the metropolitan area, as we can tell from all the people that came from around Eden Prairie who come to this great resource to partake in this asset of ours. We are as interested in saving the spring as you are, if not more. We feel charged with the responsibility to protect the natural environment and the city. And to the city's credit, as many of you residents of Eden Prairie know, the city has, over the decades, invested in land preservation as a top priority of our natural resource of the city. That has taken place. We have an extraordinary percentage of land set aside for the very reasons that everybody has cited here, and that's why people move here. There are parks, there are streams, there are lakes, there are all sorts of natural features that we have already invested in that people appreciate the community. I'm not saying that this is not a special property. It has its special features, and all development is impactful. Our job is to understand what those impacts are and to mitigate those, and to find out if there's a tipping point. And I turn to science and technology to find out if there's a tipping point and where we are in relationship to the balance of development or preservation. Even preservation can be damaging if not managed carefully. So while I am neither a biologist or soil scientist, I know enough to be dangerous in my profession about earth and the different types of soils that are around, and I know that soils' conditions are very much taken into account by the experts who look at stormwater runoff. I know for sure that they ask the questions about the, whether the soils are conducive to drainage and downward flow. In general, gravity prevails. Gravity prevails. The spring is upwards, upland, upstream from this development. Period. Gravity prevails. I believe in my heart that this development won't impact the spring or the source of the spring. The current stormwater management rules that the Watershed District imposes on current developments are significantly more stringent than the stormwater regulations that were in place upstream of Riley Creek. That is to say, for the people who say that Riley Creek is degenerating over time, that's a fact, and I can understand that. But this development with more stringent stormwater regulations in place and being downstream of the spring, in my understanding of science with the experts and in my own practice, understand that this will not be a detriment to the water quality or the asset of that spring to the city of Eden Prairie, the residents and the surrounding people. I do believe in property rights. I know some people understand that there's all sorts of reasons why property should not be owned. That's not our purview in the Planning Commission right now. We have laws, property laws to follow, and according to the Comprehensive Guide Plan of the city of Eden Prairie. Zoning is a rule, but the city council has the overarching guide plan, which is talking for residential development on this parcel. It could be developed with more units per acre, but it's not. It's less than the maximum number of units per acre, and so it's a relatively low-density impact. It's not urban by any sense of the word. So I'm supporting the application. I'm supporting the development. I think that science prevails with stormwater management. It's downstream from the spring. I'm going to continue to drink the water as long as I'm walking on this earth because it's a great source of drinking water. And we're going to be very careful about how the contractor builds this project. There are quality control measures in sight, I'm sorry, on the books that will insist upon oversight of construction means, methods, and techniques. So I'm in favor of the development. Thank you.
Well, I'll speak my piece, and it's always fun to follow Commissioner Farr because he speaks very well and eloquently. First off, just to give you some insight, what I look at when I'm looking, our job here on the Planning Commission is balance. We balance a whole lot of different conflicting things that go on, and we're trying to get the right balance for what we believe is the best for the city of Eden Prairie. People talk about taxes and tax base. I'll let you know that me personally, tax base has zero to do with my decisions. I want it, I want something that's right for the community, and whether it gives us a higher tax base or a lower tax base does not fit into my decision-making at all. So I look at the staff input. I've been on the Planning Commission for 13 years, and the staff has shown to be very credible and have a high level of expertise, so I very much respect their input. We also have codes and rules and things that we have to follow, and a lot of those have to do with landowner rights. What is the right of a landowner and what isn't the right of a landowner, and what we can do as a Planning Commission and what we can't do as a Planning Commission, because frankly, they could sue the city and overturn things that we could do if they weren't consistent with the codes and ordinances. So that's a factor. I also very seriously take community input. There have been many times when community input has changed my perspective because, you know, you're the community we represent, and we want to hear what you say, so we're going to listen very carefully. And lastly, I have my own set of values, and I factor in my set of values. When I came in here this evening, to be on the record, I voted for the Gagne proposal a year ago, and I had confidence that the spring issue was brought up then. I had confidence that the city would do the right things, and as Commissioner Farr said, science will prevail and that the spring will be safe. Can we say that as a guarantee? Absolutely not. There's nothing in this world that's guaranteed, except I'm going to die someday. And so, we can't guarantee that. But I believe the evidence is strong that the spring will be safe. So I came in here as a slam dunk. The presentations tonight by you, the participants and those at the public hearing, brought me to a point where I wasn't sure what the heck I was going to do, because your input is very important. To be honest, it's a tight call for me, but my balance is on accepting the proposal. I believe worse things could happen. I believe that there is, the balance of the landowner's rights and the community's perspective is an important one, and I believe I would lean right now very slightly to the side of supporting this proposal.
How are you benefiting from this proposal?
I am benefiting in no way whatsoever, nor are any of the other commissioners. But let me speak because the public hearing is closed. I would love to see if we could do something more to provide input to the community, supporting...
If you are not benefiting from it?
We've closed the public hearing. We've let everyone speak. We're now discussing as a commission, okay? Please.
I would like to see if there is something we can do more to provide information to the community that would give them more, at least some of you, more confidence in our belief that the spring is going to be safe. Now, I understand there's some of you who... So that's my position.
Well, this is certainly a difficult one. I have a question. I don't know if for Julie or Rod or Matt. Can you tell us a little bit about the watershed process and how that folds into this review by the watershed?
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, the Watershed District will review all of their calculations, the treatment, the removal of suspended solids, the removal of phosphorus from the site, the pre-existing conditions and the proposed conditions as far as runoff, the volume of runoff. All those type of things get calculated and reviewed by the district.
And where in the process does that happen?
It would probably happen concurrently with our review of the project. Typically, they would, I don't know if, maybe they can speak if they've already submitted the application or not, but it usually happens concurrently or shortly thereafter they've submitted to us. Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yeah.
Commissioner Kirk. Just to support what Mr. Ru is saying, I've gone to a number of the Watershed District meetings, and they have a public hearing that's very, very similar to this process, where the proponent proposes what they're going to do, and they have staff reports, and it's a parallel process focused solely on the water quality and the best management practices. And frankly, my limited experience, I'm not an expert in this, but their regulations are pretty darn strict from what I've seen. And I personally have confidence that the vast majority of the time, that a developer who follows those, which they're required to by law, will actually improve the water quality coming out of the site compared to what it was before. Good evening. Would you mind talking a little about where you are in the process?
Sure. Mr. Chair, members of the commission, thank you again for hearing me. We actually just finished applying for the watershed permit last week, so we are running the process concurrently and going through their evaluation. That's very, very typical for a development proposal. That's when it usually happens, is as the Planning Commission is considering preliminary plat proposal on their way to the council, and then that information will be coming forth to assist the council in their final decision.
Thank you. Yes, Julie.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, just one other comment. It is very typical for the city to condition that the developer provide a copy of the Watershed District permit to the city before the city will issue a land alteration permit.
Thank you. Yeah, this is a very difficult one. I was more along the lines with Commissioner Kirk. I was more along the lines with how Commissioner Kirk approached this meeting. This, I feel, compared to the last proposal we received, this is better, it's less houses. It is also low-density. Yeah, everyone's very impassioned about this, and I have been thinking about, I have visions, memories going with my parents to the spring as well. I wouldn't do anything that I felt would be detrimental to it. This is back when the railroad floodover down there, and you couldn't drive because there's no bridge certain times of the year, so I would never want to do anything that was detrimental to this. I also am not an expert in this area, and I feel comfortable relying on the experts we have, and also the Watershed District, who are going to dig into this much more than me winging on it. So for those reasons, I think it follows Aspire 2040. I think it's actually a better proposal than we saw before, but I'm in favor of advancing this to further. Is there any other comments or any discussion? All right. Entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion. Move to approve the planned unit development concept review on 27.51 acres, planned unit development district review with waivers on 27.51 acres, zoning change from rural to R1-9.5 on 27.51 acres, and site plan review on 27.51 acres, based on plans stamped dated February 19, 2021, and the staff report dated March 18, 2021.
I have a motion from Commissioner Mehdi. Do I have a second? Second. Commissioner Farr, a second. I think you want to go by Commissioner?
You guys don't care about children.
Do you want to go by Commissioner?
Grandchildren.
There's so much land out there. Yes, sir, I will, yes, sir, I will call the roll.
Commissioner Marcos?
Can I just go down the list?
Yeah, go down the list.
Okay, Commissioner Kirk.
Aye.
Higgins.
Aye.
Commissioner Piper.
Aye.
Commissioner Farr.
Aye.
Commissioner De Sanctus.
I'm sorry, what was that?
No? Okay. Commissioner Marcos.
Nay.
Commissioner Mehdi.
Aye.
Commissioner Gooding.
No.
Okay.
All right. All right, it moves forward to the next steps. Thank you, everyone, for your attendance tonight and your comments.
Moving on, do we have any planners' reports this evening?
No, sir.
Do we have any members' reports?
Anyone online?
Nope. All right, entertain a motion, adjourn. Move to adjourn. All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of adjuring, say aye.
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 Meeting's adjourned, thank you.